How many of us do we have today?
We have, we have six. Jake's, yeah, Brooke won't be here, but Jake will be 15 minutes late.
Okay.
Call meeting to order. Good afternoon and welcome to the monthly meeting of the City Des Moines zoning board of adjustment. This board has the power under Iowa law and zoning ordinance of the City of Des Moines to hear requests for variances and exceptions from the regulations in the zoning ordinance, conditional use permits, and appeals from the decision of the staff and the administration of the zoning ordinance, and to make decisions in such matters. This is an open and informal meeting as currently being recorded. The board members have received a copy of the agenda, staff reports, and recommendations. Copies of the agenda, staff report, and recommendations are available to public in those two trays on my left. We're going to have six members of the board here. I'll introduce the members that are going to be here today. On my right is Cindy Smith. Next to her is Tom Clark, Sr. On my far left, we'll have Jake Christensen. He'll be about 15 minutes late. Next to him is Mel Penns. Next to him is Lynda Westergaard. My name's Bill Gray. Representing City Legal today is Michael Kelly. Representing City Staff, we have Eric Lundie, City Planner, Bert Drost, City Planner, Sue Ann Donovan, zoning enforcement officer, and the man he was here is Emmanuel Tribio. Yes, is a City Planner here as well. The board is required to base its decision in each case upon the criteria established by law for the type of relief sought by the applicant. The law applicable to each case is identified in the written staff report. If the facts as determined by the board demonstrate that the criteria established by law for granting the relief have been satisfied, then the board must grant the relief. Otherwise, the board must deny the relief. All speakers are requested to focus their comments upon those facts that demonstrate whether or not the criteria established by law have been satisfied. Each appeal will be announced in order, and the staff will present a brief explanation of the appeal. Any written comments received by the staff prior to the hearing will be distributed to the board or otherwise identified. All speakers are requested to speak from the podium over here on my right, and begin their presentation by giving both their name and address. The applicant or representative of the applicant is allowed to speak first, and will be allowed 10 minutes to present their appeal. Anyone else present in support of the appeal will then be allowed five minutes each to present his or her comments. Anyone present in opposition to the appeal will then be allowed five minutes each to present his or her comments. The applicant then will be allowed three minutes for rebuttal or other closing comments. The meeting will then be closed to the public comment, and the board will make a decision. That decision and reason will be announced. Items that are listed on the consent portion of the agenda will not be individually discussed and will be considered for approval with accordance with the staff recommendation of the staff report unless an individual present or member of the board requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda and separately considered on the public hearing agenda. The decisions of this board can only be appealed to the Polk County District Court. If you believe you have been harmed by an error made by this board, your only remedy is to seek relief through the district court within 30 days of the filing of the board's decision and order. If you believe the zoning regulations applied by this board are wrong, you may petition the city council to change those regulations. All material, written or otherwise used today as part of any presentation will become a permanent part of the record and will not be returned. If you have cell phones on out there, we ask you to turn them either off or at least on vibrate, so it's very disruptive to the process here, and we appreciate it. If we need to, we're going to take a short break around the 3:00 or 3:30 timeframe. We'll see how far we get along there. As I mentioned, we have a consent agenda, and I have been notified, Bert, that item 14.
Item number 14 is a series of requests from the city's Parks and Recreation Department, which would allow a temporary parking lot near Southeast 14th Street and Scott Avenue. We did not receive any objections to it, so the applicant is in agreement with the staff recommendation, so we feel it could be moved to the consent agenda if this board is comfortable with it.
Okay. Is there anybody here to speak against item 14? I'll entertain a motion then to move item 14 to the rest of the items on the consent agenda.
So move.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Those in favor, raise your hand and say aye. Motion carries five to nothing, so we're going to hear item 14 on the consent agenda items, and that's the ones I'm just going to read off right now. On the consent agenda, there's a, item one is a variance at 5720 Waterberry Circle. Item two is a variance at 2105 Ingersoll. Item three is an exception at 2900 Holcombe. Item four is an exception at 4020 River Oaks Drive. Item five is an exception at 7695 Southeast 14th, and the one we just voted on, item 14, which is a special permit variance and exception in the vicinity of 1201 Scott Avenue. Is there anybody here that wants to speak against the items that I just read off? That's items one through five and 14. Anybody on the board have any objections? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion to approve the variances, exceptions, and special permits requested on items one, two, three, four, five, and 14, subject to the staff recommendations as presented.
Got a second? Yeah, I'll second that. Thank you. It's moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five to nothing, so if you're here for items one through five or 14, they have been approved, and as staff has reminded me in the past, wait a day and go down and get your permits, and you can get started. Thank you. And if you want to stick around and watch your government at work, you're more than welcome to.
You're a lucky one. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight items to here.
Item six is a continuation from the September 26th meeting for an exception and variance at 2325 Carpenter.
Yes, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Eric Lundie, Senior City Planner. I don't know if I'm going to let the appellants go over their information that you had requested from last hearing. Basically, what's being requested is a total of four units on this property, within an original single-family house, and then a carriage house, and they've, I think in your packet you would have the materials that they forwarded in the interim.
We got to communicate.
So I will let the appellants go over that. Staff's maintaining the same recommendation. We're in favor of relief to allow the two units in the main original residential structure, but we're recommending denial of the other appeals that would allow the use of the carriage house for another two units, basically.
Okay. Did they come back to you with any updated drawings?
Yeah, that's this information that's in the packet. I can, I've got, I don't know if yours' versions are color.
No.
I'll pass this around then for you to look at. The one sketch that they did provide was not in color anywhere. I'll let you look at that. Otherwise, if there's not any other questions, I'll let the appellant present their case.
Any other questions for staff?
Yeah, your recommendation on the carriage house is that it not be used for any purposes as a single-family dwelling or apartment.
Correct. So we were, the width, the lot width still needs relief to allow even the use of the main original dwelling for two units because the lot is so small and narrow. So we're in favor of that relief to allow the downsizing of the main dwelling, but the total number of units at four units and use of that carriage house for a dwelling unit is, we're not in support of.
One quick one. On the map there, the lot to the north, that looks to generally be vacant.
It's a larger lot.
Okay. But then it looks like, is there a house or something on the north end of that?
Yeah.
Okay.
So that's one, there's a couple of examples of, on the block where, you know, there's a larger apartment building, but it has more land as well.
Okay. I was just, I was curious if they could acquire more property to expand the size of that parcel. Could they then more easier seek some relief?
Possibly.
Okay.
They do, there's also, you know, this to the east of it, so it's not even a full depth.
Right. Lot all the way. Gotcha. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thanks, Eric. Applicant or representative of the applicant?
Afternoon. Trevor Williams, Des Moines Building and Land, 2128 University in Des Moines. The packet that we brought, the requested information was two projects we've done in the neighborhood, to the two closest in proximity to the 2325. That's 1131 and 2128. The second thing that was requested was the drawing, so we put a drawing together for that. Basically, the drawing is what is underneath the siding material that's there now, so there is a nonoriginal siding material on the carriage house that we would be removed, and then we would put it back to repair what's underneath and put it back to the historically accurate wood clapboard siding. So I think, yeah, there is pictures in there of the, well, I think last time we spoke about the historical accuracy of the carriage house compared to the house, because the whole point of saving the house and using the carriage house is to help, help offset some of the cost, and we would, as seen in some of the other projects, we would use that same type of historic trim pattern in both the house and the carriage house.
So Trevor, from, from last month's discussion then, the only new information we've got here to review is you've now got the profile drawing, what the architectural view of the carriage house would be.
That's correct.
If it's converted to the, the two-dwelling unit.
Yes, because I felt that was a fairly strong problem, and also from our perspective, we don't want to build something that looks like a garage. I think that was one of the concerns last time, so we felt by putting the drawing together, it is hard when you just drive by it and see with that unoriginal siding. It does not look very tasteful in comparison to the rest of the stuff in the neighborhood.
Cindy?
Your proposal is for two family units in the home and then two family units in the carriage house.
That's correct.
And the reason you're asking for that is to help you meet costs.
That's correct.
If you go with just one unit in the carriage house, would that be detrimental? It seems considerably smaller than the house, so that's my thought.
Sure. It, we have looked at that. Part of this that we, an update that I can give you is, speaking with our lender, the project again is very tight, and at, on their end of things, they were a lot more comfortable with four units. The cash flow, they just felt with two units or even three, because I know last time we talked about possibly three units in the house and then nothing in the carriage house. From their standpoint, to get the project done, they really wanted to see the four units, and we were in agreement. We don't want to be in a situation where we put a bunch of resources into it and we're not getting anything out of it at all at that level, so it's kind of, from our standpoint, it is, it's kind of an all or nothing project. There's so much money involved here, and as I said before, the house itself is so rough. It is incredibly rough. All the wiring's been stolen, the copper's been stolen, the walls are all broken, they took the cast iron out. I mean, it's, somebody went to great lengths to make very little amount of money, but it cost us a lot of money now, so that would be my, kind of our explanation on the four units in particular.
One more. Trevor, the, we haven't talked much about parking. Now, you're asking for a variance of all the, of the regulation that all parking spaces must be outside of the required front yard setback. So based on that, are you, do you have paving now for the parking areas, or what is it coupled with?
There's both paving, asphalt, and historic brick parking. And actually, if, in between where the carriage house and the, the main house is, there, in my original drawing, I believe I made a measurement of that.
Very good.
And that, so what you see there, which appears to be grass, is historic brick paving for what we assumed was...
Can you kind of point to where that is a little further?
Yes, so at this point, from this corner all the way to where this stairs is, going all the way back to the north, that's all brick paving, and it goes back to a, some kind of a broken rock or broken concrete wall, and then, as you can see, there's a fence that runs along the northernmost perimeter of the property. And so I believe you have to have nine feet in the City of Des Moines to be classified as a parking spot. And I think, I, I don't have, do we have that, the original drawing with the measurements?
Yeah, like a site plan?
Yes, I think we have, if we have that, I believe that measurement is in there.
I'm just, I'm just a little concerned if you wind up with four units, which, you know, that's, that's what you'd like to have, you're going to have probably four to six cars trying to park off the street. I would assume that in a lot of these units, we're going to have more than one person, and unless they don't come with a car, is there some on-street parking available on your side of the street?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
There is, okay, so yeah, you can see here, there's actually, in my drawing, I made this much wider, legally you could have at least three spots right there.
Okay.
Without any, without taking advantage of any of the southernmost front area, which is the part of paving and asphalt now.
Okay.
On the, on the west side of 23rd, there is off-street parking, the whole street, and then also on the south side of Carpenter, running east and west, that entire side is also off-street parking.
Okay.
So there's a tremendous amount of off-street parking, both on either side of the corner.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else here to speak in support? Anybody here to speak in opposition? Any last questions for staff? Hearing none, we'll close the public portion, go to board decision then.
Well, we've got a drawing now. Just an observation, if he wants to look at two units in that carriage house, each unit's going to measure 12 foot by 13 foot. Is that correct?
The, the living's portion or the...
Well, you're, you've shown the...
I need a heavy answer on that. That, you didn't know.
I'm sorry, I...
I don't have very good...
I should have asked him a question. I was just doing some math here. If the carriage house is 24 by 26...
That's correct.
If you split it roughly in half...
It's an up-down unit.
So, so there's going to be, oh, there'll be one on top and one on the...
Yep. In our new drawing, we brought the, that has two doors at the west end, so one of the doors will be a direct access to the second floor, and the one door will be a direct access in.
Okay, but since you've got like a, you know, a roof line there, I'm assuming the top unit's a little smaller.
It's slightly smaller, and it's, deceiving in the picture, the window, the upper window, the floor is not at the base of that window. It is actually lower, which gives you more headroom.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. So, thank you, Trevor. So back to, back to this, I do have a little concern that, that even with what he just mentioned, we're going to have a smaller unit upstairs, there's, there's no doubt about that. Not necessarily the biggest place to be divvying up into two units, so...
Well, I think if you look at what the purpose of it's, in the Drake area, it's for students, they're, you know, I don't think they're looking at taking a family with two or three or four kids and plunking them in there. I, I really appreciate what this company's doing for the City of Des Moines. I think they're going into some really distressed areas and really, really making it very beautiful. I'm in support of what they'd like to do.
Could you put the picture up again that shows the garage area at the back of the house there?
Yeah. I don't so much mind the idea that there are going to be, there would be two units in this carriage house, as I mind the idea that you're going to establish parking in front of it. I think that probably if we're going to do anything with the carriage house, we ought to tell the owner to move the parking to three slots between the major house and the carriage house, and give him a waiver on the rest of the required parking, and let him park on the street, them knowing that that's going to be what the deal is. But I don't see that this adds very much to the neighborhood or to the project by putting parking in front of the carriage house.
I don't know if this is going to go too far, but would, you said you could get three spots there pretty easily, couldn't you?
Yes, yep. There's, there's 30 feet, and the city is nine feet wide.
Okay.
And that would leave enough room for the sidewalk that is to the west there.
So if we made that condition of approval, you're okay with that?
Absolutely. Yep, no problem at all.
Anything else, Tom?
No.
Tom's got a good point. Even as we look at the parking part of that apron, it doesn't match up with the approach like I think we would normally see in a, in new paving or a new development.
Something, something to mention is there is two approaches. I don't know if we talked about that last time. You can't see it. There's actually an approach, the original approach is, see where this bush is here? Just to the west is the original approach for the property.
And that hasn't been taken out?
Actually, that was supposed to be removed. Yeah, it was supposed to be.
Yeah, because I see you have new curb in there.
Never, never was, but yeah, you can see it there, and actually, that was the, the, if, if it came down to we couldn't, couldn't take advantage of, in front of the carriage house, we would, we would ask to be able to reopen that, and then that would lead directly into right here, right to where the original brick paving parking area is.
Eric, that, that would just be a site plan issue, not, not our issue, would it?
No, that would be your issue.
Oh.
Of where we want it removed.
They wouldn't have enough spaces for one. They need to have four for the, for four units. So, but you would want to make it a condition.
Do you use that other approach?
Yeah, to remove the, the east approach. If they want to reuse that approach or establish a new approach to the west, that would be fine, but you'd want to, you'd want to be specific about it.
You want one or the other of them closed.
Four spaces.
Right. And actually, if you're really wanting to maneuver correctly, you probably need to have a new approach for whatever you're establishing, because the way it's designed right now, you, you flare out to get to the other, but if you're putting an approach there, you're going to be backing directly, so you'll, you probably want a little bit wider than that original approach. Just because, well, you may be able to get by with it, but it, it would be better if it was wider.
Could you, could you show that on his parking drawing he had, what you're talking about, Eric, with some...
So we're clear with this, yeah.
And he's actually showing a, the approach...
He's showing it mad sharp, but it doesn't, right. Good try.
The approach is probably about this wide, and then there's the other approach over here. We'd probably want, you know, to remove this, maybe reuse portion of that, or, and then widen it to be, so that they can just back directly from three spaces then, and then you'd want to restore this area.
I don't see why you couldn't just have three parking spaces back there and have one access.
I think that's what...
No, he's talking about making the access as wide as it's drawn.
Yeah, it's a little offset, so if, if it can work physically, they could reuse it potentially.
Yeah.
And also, we're governed on, the approach can only be a certain amount of width there. I'm not exactly sure what the figure is.
Right.
That would be determined by Rob, I believe is the guy who does that. Yeah, there's, there's, they can have it up to 20 feet wide.
But that's not a public sidewalk there. You've got something marked sidewalk.
He's just showing a pedestrian.
But that's not a...
To the back of the property that's not there. That's proposed.
Okay, that, that is not...
The public sidewalk is not shown on here, which is...
Okay.
That's not an access to additional property through use of a public...
Yeah, this is probably an eight-foot approach. I don't think it's adequate to be maneuvering out of three stalls through an eight-foot approach, but...
You got to quit buying those big cars.
I guess you could do it, yeah.
All right. Eric, can you put the other photograph back up that kind of focuses on the garage? So I'd like to find a way to maybe get rid of some paving here, but still preserve some maneuvering room. All right. Yeah. The front yard setback, you got an approximate, how, how far back would that be from the sidewalk on that right side? Where, see, he's got paving all the way up to the sidewalk there, east of the approach.
Yeah, he didn't dimension that, it's...
No, but just, just show it on the colored photograph there. About how far back would he have to go, just judge, judgmentally?
Right here.
Okay. So what if, from where the, the apron meets the sidewalk, he takes out a little chunk there on the far right corner?
Right here.
Up on the backside of the sidewalk, which is considered as front yard, yes.
Yeah.
He takes out enough necessary there, so we got a little green space.
He was already showing that happening.
He, he is where? I'm, I'm not seeing that.
On the kind of edge, yeah.
Well, I'm not seeing that.
Yeah, it's awful.
He's going and coming off the end of the floor.
All right, so he's, so he's going to restore green space on the east side all the way up to the carriage house?
That's correct, yep. About three feet is what it is.
Okay, so if he did that, what if we had him back off from the carriage house about 10 feet to the south? There, there wouldn't be enough room?
Half of the car would be in the right way.
Okay, okay.
That's a, that's a misleading distance.
Okay.
Stalls need to be 17, 17 feet, and he's probably...
Trevor, you might want to think about having dimension drawings in the future. All the way around.
I think he's tickled that he's here this far.
12 feet at the most. This actual distance from property line to the garage is probably about 12.
All right.
I think I felt, and this, this may help, help your position here, I think I felt from our position, if we could keep the three spots over here and get with, not informing without the one, we would probably take this portion, as you're saying, come out 10 feet and bring this back to green space here, leave turning spot right out here, and I felt that was probably the best course, but...
So could we add an appeal on to get rid of one parking spot? Is that, is that what it comes down to for the...
I mean, you're already granting variances, so it's been notified to an adequate area.
Okay.
It's based on what's being proposed, you're going...
Tom, is that in line with kind of what your thought is?
Yeah, it is.
Because if we got rid of one spot, then we could kind of restore some green space in front of the carriage house, you know, have a sidewalk come to it and everything, but...
I guess if you, like the neighbors needed to know there would be one less space, you would, you would ask to continue it so we could notify it.
I don't think that's necessary.
No, I don't either.
And, and I'm guessing that parking is well-used, but in the evenings when there's no classes, you're far enough off-campus, that would just probably be for people that live there, correct?
Yeah, that's correct. Absolutely.
Okay.
And I have a question. Who's, who's going to own these properties?
I'm one of the owners.
So you're going to own them? You're not going to do this and then sell it?
No, Des Moines Building and Land doesn't sell anything, so we're in the business of buying and renting primarily, so...
Okay. Where's the sewer? Does the carriage house have its own sewer?
Yes, actually it does. I don't know, that would be like a separate sewer line? And that'll all have to be brought up to modern code, but it actually does have a cast iron sewer line that runs from this corner to inside the house, and the main stack is right over in this corner. Our, the master plumber investigated that, and that actually does have supply water lines also. All of that would be freshened and brought up to modern code, but it is currently there, and that's how we were able to determine that it...
So the, so the carriage house would run into the regular house?
That's correct.
Or would it have its own? It would be on its own separate?
Well, if they were building new, they'd require a separate. The fact that they're reusing what's there, they're okay, but they couldn't divide the property and sell it without re-establishing separate services.
Okay.
Right, they'd probably share a water service too. That's correct, yep. The, for the electric, whether it makes a difference or not, those can be separated, so it'll, in the other drawing I sho, I showed on the west side, there'll be its own separate service mask to service that, and then there'll also be service with their own individual furnaces for both, one for up, one for down.
Okay, I think we've got all the questions we need. We're still in the public, or the decision-making process, so thank you, appreciate it.
Just a little input.
Thank you, Eric. So we've heard a lot of information, a lot of things are a lot better than they were last month, so do we hear any thoughts? Do we hear a motion? Nobody wants to get their toe in the water, huh? Wow.
Okay, it's not, it's not the, it's not the best situation for any of us. I like what Cindy said about, you know, trying to fix this place up, and it sounds like it was kind of a pile of malarkey when, when you guys acquired it. Thanks, Joe Biden. And from what I've seen, a little trust here, I, I think you guys mean well in what you're And from what I've seen, a little trust here, I, I think you guys mean well in what you're trying to do. But I also liked what Tom said about trying to minimize the impact. So, I'll try this. I'm going to put a motion out here to approve the exceptions and variances, um, requested. However, I want to add a variance of one parking space, one less parking space than required.
Is it a variance or an exception, Eric?
It's an exception, an exception of one parking space less than the required four. Um, I'd also like to see condition, they remove the existing paved area that is east, located east of the existing east approach, if that makes sense? Do I need to give any more detail? Can you work that out? Okay.
And that the resultant approach is that there only be one approach as a result?
And after remove the other west approach that's there and unused, restore the curb. And then do we want to have the first 10 feet south of the carriage house be green space?
I think he's going to do it anyway, but it's not a bad idea to include it.
But yeah, put it in there, um, which, which would not preclude you from installing necessary sidewalks to access the entrances. Is that okay? Eric, Bert? Okay, all right. So, you know, some little shrubs, flowers, I don't care, something. All right.
I'll second that.
Been moved and seconded.
It's kind of rough, but.
Good discussion, but, uh, any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, raise your hand, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries six to nothing. It's well worth coming back.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
We'll be driving by to check it out.
Have an open house. You bet.
Item seven was continued from the September 26th meeting as well. It's an exception and variance to 517 Scott and 604 Southeast 6th. And I believe these one, they requested the continuous because we didn't have enough members.
Correct.
We have six members, okay.
Chair members of the board, Sue Ann Donovan, zoning enforcement officer for the city, I'm going to present today. I'm going to pass out around to you Exhibit 11, so you can review it as we go through this. This would be the notice of violation and a consent decree. Is Exhibit 12, that's also attached, that was entered by the Iowa District Court regarding, um, compliance issues on this lot. This is the aerial photo that shows where the lot is at the corner of Southeast 6th and Scott. It's actually two addresses used as one parcel, 517 Scott and 604 Southeast 6th. Here's a 2009 aerial that shows the condition of the property. This is the consent map. Should be noted that this is city property, and that probably should be read.
Well, I guess you're here today.
And here are the cards. I'll pass those around. We've had, um, quite a long history of enforcement on this lot. And I'm going to go quickly through some of the enforcement history. I'm not going to do it all again. I think it was pretty much resolved in the consent decree that we went in, in district court, where there was a finding it was in violation. Exhibit one is a, um, enforcement complaint from 1990 citing inoperable vehicles, um, that need to be removed. And that, so we'd started this clear back in 90. Here's another notice in 1990, same thing, vehicles, boats, trailers unfit for legal use permitted. They're stored on the property outside of a building, um, and they were to remove all of those at that point. Here's a response to the letter of violation. Um, as you can see, there's numbers of vehicles that were stored on this property, um, clear back then. That would be Exhibit number three. Exhibit four, um, is again, another acknowledgement of violations sent by our city zoning inspector, Jim Gorshee at the time, citing the tendency to store junk cars, junk parts, um, large number of vehicles inside the fence that are inoperable and not currently being worked on. Should be noted that this property is zone M1, which does not allow for junk, um, cars or vehicles to be stored on the property as a junkyard. Here in 1993, of junk vehicles parked in the city right of way. Um, again, we're, uh, the owners requesting additional time in order to bring the property into compliance. 1993, another violation notice, same thing. Here we have filed a civil infraction in, um, 1993, seeking, uh, compliance on the property.
Mention the exhibit.
I'm sorry, Exhibit number seven. And Exhibit number eight, we have a consent decree where the owners agree to bring the property back into compliance. So clear back in 1993, they agreed that they would be in compliance in Exhibit eight. Exhibit nine is showing an ongoing pattern of continued violations, 96, 97, 98 to 99. Exhibit number 10 is another notice in 2002 regarding illegal use of the property, failure to have a site plan, failure to have a CO, parking and salvaging of vehicles, um, parts being stored on the property. In number 11, what you have in front of you is my letter to the walkers in 2010 outlining all of the violations on the property. And Exhibit 12, again, is the consent decree that I passed out to you for your review. Here are pictures that are more current of the property. Um, here's Exhibit 13. This is off of Southeast 6th.
If you'll wait a second, Sue Ann. When is, what's the date on the consent decree that you're referring to there that, Exhibit 12?
Exhibit 12 of 11.
August.
It's hard to read, but it's August 2nd, yes.
2011. Thank you.
Here's number 14. This again is, um, off of Southeast 6th, unimproved parking that they're parking on. Here's Exhibit 15, showing some condition of the cars being parked. I, I know that they claim these cars are for sale, but you have to wonder if they aren't just junk vehicles with for-sale signs on them, um, rather than being operable and ready to sell. Number 16 shows, they did improve part of this. This is supposed to be landscaped, that isn't. Here's Exhibit 17, showing more cars, more unimproved surface. 17A is just a same picture further back off of Scott. Exhibit 18 is what is inside of the fenced area. Junk, we have things covered up. Number 19 also is inside of the enclosed area. Number 20 shows the alley, which has sometimes been blocked off and used for parking. They also park along Scott Street on the, um, city right of way occasionally, quite often, actually. Here's Exhibit 21, that shows the site plan. I, I know they're asking for variances, um, in order to setbacks and things like that. This property eventually will be, um, zoned to a, a different use. This is part of the market district area. Um, I don't support granting these people more time or more exceptions or more variances. We have never gotten them into compliance. Um, I don't think it's the best use of the property to be granting expansion of this lot in this area for this use. I think you have to realize that once you grant a variance or an exception, it runs with the land. It will be there forever, um, until it's redeveloped into something else. I don't think we want to perpetuate this use. They have not been good actors with the city over the years. I'm not in favor of granting them any relief at this point.
Now, let me ask you a question. If you look at the consent decree of August 2nd, 2011, that's I, Exhibit 12.
Yes.
That you handed out to each of us. If we were to deny, uh, the request for exceptions and variances and indicate to you that this board, the sense of the board was to enforce the consent decree, would that be a satisfactory resolution as far as the city is concerned?
Absolutely. Absolutely, yes. We would like to enforce the consent decree.
Well, they agreed to it at one time. That's what a consent decree is.
They agreed to it at one time, and now they're doing an administrative action, which we're allowing to run, but previously they agreed to do this. So, um, you're right. What we really wanted to do is get it into compliance with the consent decree.
Okay. Thank you. Mel.
Sue Ann, the, um, site plan you have before us here, Exhibit number 21, that is the site plan as proposed by the appellant for the exceptions and variances they're requesting. Is that correct?
I believe so.
Okay. And I noticed there were the new planters and the new curbing there. Um, did the city need to take any of their property to expand the right of way or buy any property from them for the street improvements that were just made?
No, they did not.
Okay, all right, okay.
They had previously done some, but not under this current.
Okay, so, so the improvements, you know, I'm kind of saying that like lightly, but the improvements that were made with like, what's looks like the flower bed, the appellant did that all on its own?
They did that as part of an enforcement action several years back, where we asked for minimum compliance on that portion that they were using at that point, and now they've expanded.
Okay, because I know there have been a lot of improvements made at the intersection. We got nice brick bollards now and nice signaled intersections and pavers for the crosswalks there on the ML King. Well, it's, it's the Scott Southeast 6th, but it ties into that ML King look for down there, which has been a great improvement at that intersection. Okay, thank you.
Sue Ann, just one question. If we do deny the exceptions and variances, what, what enforcement action do you have? It sounds like you've had enforcement action for quite a while. What, how?
We have a consent decree, and if they continue to refuse to bring it into compliance with the consent decree, we do an application for order to show cause why they should not be held in contempt of their agreement to bring the property into compliance.
Okay. And at the same time, in that same application, it seems to me that not only could you ask them to be held in contempt, but you could ask the court to authorize the city to haul away all of the cars that are in the violation area and anything that's on the property that's inoperable. Because clearly, they're not held for sale.
I believe that we have that authorized.
But I mean, you know.
Yeah, we could, we could start to do that, absolutely.
Haul it away.
Yeah, we could, we could start cleaning it up.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions?
Thanks, Sue Ann. Applicant or representative of the applicant?
Hi, Board. My name is Bob Olson. Address is 4024 Grand Avenue, number 100, Des Moines. And, um, well, I guess I'm prepared to speak the best I can to this. I wasn't aware that, um, the extent of, I mean, I knew the history of this property. I'm actually a, a customer of Dave's. I'm also a licensed architect and a licensed real estate appraiser here in town. And, um, I, I got the impression that the staff recommendation was to, uh, to allow us some flexibility with this. So, tell you what, I'll just go ahead and get into it. Uh, there's a couple of things going on right now, um, that I think the board needs to be aware of. Uh, Mr. Walker is, does want to comply. He wants to stay in business for a while longer. His wife has terminal cancer right now. His biggest concern is spending time with his wife and trying to stay open for a while. Um, I think we all recognize that this is far from the highest and best use for this property, and, um, it will be sold. In fact, Mr. Walker is thinking of selling this within the, within the near future. And, uh, but, but again, he would like to stay in business for a little while longer. I'm not quite sure what's going to happen when his wife does pass away. His attorney, Chris James, and I are both talking to Dave to try to reason with him on what the next plan is. And we have gotten Bishop Engineer to work on a site plan. Our intent was to, um, I guess to talk about or maybe try to get a variance. We are giving up on one of the variances we're asking for, um, which is the setback, and we'll, we will maintain a 10-foot setback on that south property line between residential. Uh, the other thing I might add is the photographs, well, I agree, it's, it's been a mess. And actually, those cars do run, because I bought a car from Dave off that lot, and it's running right now anyway. And, uh, so they do run. But, uh, I, I think the point is that we're trying to give him a little more time to just stay in business. As I said, Chris James, attorney, and I are working with him to get this cleaned up. Um, and, and the point I was trying to make earlier, it is substantially cleaned up from what the photographs show. In fact, the fenced-in area, I would, I would guess is probably 50 to 75% empty right now when I last looked across the fence. So it's, so he is working to try to get this thing cleaned up, and as Chris and I are both on him to do that. So I guess we're, we are respectfully requesting at least consideration of the exception, the two variances. I don't know if there's a chance. I'm talking to city staff. There was some talk about maybe an 18-month or two-year moratorium on the dustless surface on some of these. I don't know what we can, what we can do. Again, we're just trying to keep him in business for a little while longer. He's a small businessman. He's been there for 30 years. He's been in business for 40 years, and he's, he wants to be a good citizen, believe me. And as I said, Chris and I are both talking and trying to get this thing, uh, cleaned up, and we're, and the staff has been very helpful in doing that over the last couple of months. I have not been on this very long, and I'm a little bit blindsided with all the, and again, I'm aware of the, of the history to a degree, but not the, the extent that was laid out today. So, for that, I apologize. I should have had Chris James here, his attorney, but he's not here, and, uh, I'm the best he's got right now. So, anyway, that's all I've got.
Questions? Mel.
Well, Bob, you must be a, a, a good customer and an even better friend, Mr. Walker's, to be here today. But I'm, I'm curious with the concern that you have, and I'm guessing in this line of work, you know, he probably does a lot of repair for some diehard customers. Could you guys just have a, you know, let's help Dave day and come in there and get these cars out of there, work with some other auto recyclers, and just get them out of there?
Yeah, we can do that, yes. Given, you know, given a little bit of time, correct?
If there's no relief granted here today, the city may still have to take whatever time it takes with its legal.
I understand that.
But maybe during that time, you could still try to get some of this done.
Yes, and we'd be.
I've driven by this business every day for 16 years on my way to work. I like old cars. I can tell you a lot of the cars, even tractors, that he's had on this property, but I've always been just flummoxed by how cruddy it's looked. It has been a detriment to that part of that neighborhood, certainly that intersection, for many years. It'd be neat to have a little British Motors repair all tricked out there. Cars coming and going like Drake Garage or something like that. But when I drive by this, it just looks like abandoned vehicles.
And I agree with you 100%.
And it'd just be nice if, you, you, you know, with, with, with friendship and, and, and good-naturedness, everybody just jumps in and helps them out. I mean, we've got a 20-year legal history here. This isn't just something that happened a few months ago.
I, I.
You know, so, so you, you might want to think about that.
Any other questions for the applicant?
No.
Thank you. Anybody else here to speak in support? Anybody here to speak in opposition? Any last questions for staff? Sue Ann? Has he come to talk about an 18- to 24-month extension? No?
I have not been approached with that. I, I would say this, if, if the variances and exceptions aren't granted, we'll give them a 30-day notice to comply under the consent decree before we do anything else, in light of the potential to get this thing cleaned up voluntarily.
Okay. Any other questions? Thanks, Sue Ann. Close the public portion, go to board decision then.
I think that we, you know, I understand his plight, but I think we should deny any variances or, or any exceptions. He's going to have 30 days. Let his friends get in there and help him, but, I mean, this is not a new situation. This has been going on for a long time. You know, they have the order where they said they were going to, to comply. They didn't. Time has run out. I'm sorry. But I'm, I'm, I've got to go with what Sue Ann wants. I just can't see any other way.
I kind of think Sue Ann can work with him a little bit too. I'm sorry.
My, my only other thought, and I like everything I'm hearing, and I'm sorry about his, his, his own personal circumstances. I think we're all sorry to hear that. Can we give him 60 days, 45 days? Does that ease it up anymore?
That's what I wanted to find out from Sue Ann. I think what, don't address Cindy's concern?
And I have, I have two thoughts on this. In light of the fact that we've been doing this for 20 years, what's another 15 days? On the other hand, we, we, we need a drop dead date, and, and we need to establish that so he understands that, that, that this is it. We've got to do something. So if, if the board says 45 days, 60 days, I am certainly not going to argue with that. I, I just want them to understand that this has to be done. We have a consent decree. They've exhausted, you know, all possibilities, and we just need to get it cleaned up and done.
I don't think the board ought to be granting him any additional time. The city, in its wisdom, can grant its own time if they so desire.
Taking into consideration the concerns of the board.
Enforcement always takes time and paperwork and whatever, so.
And really can't do anything until the decision order's written, and you know, there's.
Yeah.
We can make that one. All right. Go back to discussion. Linda, were you, you making yours in the form of a motion?
I would make a motion that we deny any, any, uh, the exception or the variances requested.
As the appointee from Ward 4, I would second that motion.
Thank you, Mel. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries six to nothing. So, uh, Sue Ann, with your kind and generous heart, you're going to, uh, take care of this, right? Thank you. Okay, item eight, uh, we, this is a kind of a continuation, uh, but it's the review of the conditional use permit at 4800 Southwest 9th. That was the thirsty sportsman. I think, uh, we've got some people that, some changes have been made, or?
Sue Ann Donovan again, um, zoning board of adjust, or zoning enforcement officer. Do we want to go through a short history of?
Sure.
How we got here, just as a short reminder of?
The Cliff Notes version.
Yeah, we're Cliff.
Dust jacket version.
In fact, one page is it. In fact, one page. September 26th of '07, the Board issued a conditional use permit for a bar and tavern at this location, 4800 Southwest Ninth. At that point, the applicant came in. It was called Bella Noche, and they assured the Board and staff that they would be an upscale bar for older adults to, you know, enjoy, and there wouldn't be any noise. And, and we all kind of agreed, and that was a good deal until they went out of business. And there were, another bar went in and it was, had some noise problems. And then the Thirsty Sportsman went in and there were some noise problems with live bands. And the music basically comes out through the air conditioning and other units on the top of the roof. And when those are open, then, then the, the music travels up the back of that lot into the townhomes on the top of the hill. We had numerous complaints called into the PD Department. In fact, and they did an administrative hearing on the 23rd of August, 2011. The administering, administrative hearing officer for alcohol appeals found them in violation and creating a nuisance. We continued to get complaints. They didn't turn down the music. And so I filed an application to review the conditional use permit, and that was heard on January 25th of 2012. At that point, trying to figure out what a good sound level in that building would be to allow them to use the building, but not impact adversely with the nuisance of the noise up above, the Board set it at 95 dB, measured at 100, or measured at the bar in, within the building, wasn't supposed to go over 95 dB. That proved to be difficult for the neighbors again. They did sound readings, and I introduced in, in, in that hearing Exhibits A, B, C, D, E, F, and G. And we were showing on A, February 25th, the max was 95.8 dB on that night. So we were above the 95. March 3rd, in Exhibit B, the max was 95.9, but we had 509 in 10-second intervals between 90 and 95 dB. So we were bumping it continuously for periods of time. March 10th was Exhibit C. The max was 94.9. The deep, the 90 to 95 dB that night was 421 10-second intervals, bumping that between 90 and 95. Exhibit D, March 17th, the max was 95 dB. It hit 706 10-second intervals between 90 and 95 dB on that night. E was, Exhibit E was March 24th of 2012. The max on that night was 95.6. We had 178 10-second intervals bouncing between the 90 and 95 dB range. F was March 31st. Exhibit F, the max was 95. The 90 to 95 range was 722 10-second intervals bouncing between 90 and 95. Exhibit G was July 21st of 2012. The max was 91.9. Again, we had 148 10-second intervals between 90 and 95. When we came back to the Board then, after that hearing, the Board decided to set it at 85 dB. And I have Exhibits A through double L, which I will introduce, but I'm not going to do them one at a time. What I've done instead is an Exhibit MM that sets out the dB maxes that were met after we did the 85 dB. They never exceeded 85 dB after you set it at 85. So it's, and, and it seems, from what I'm hearing, that we've reached a, a good level of music for the neighbors, although I will let whoever's here to, from the neighbors give, give their own opinion on that. But that's where we're at today, is to decide if we've reached a, a good compromise to let them keep the conditional use permit at a sound that the neighbors can, can live with. And if the neighbors are happy with the 85, I'm certainly happy with the 85.
Okay. Questions? Thanks, Sue Ann. I think we'll get more interesting as this goes on.
Oh, let me pass out the cards from this, for this hearing also. And here is the map.
And the complainants are in the, the condominium project to the west? The, the ones that object here?
Correct. Those were, that came, the noise goes up the hill.
Right.
And, and these are the people that are being impacted adversely.
But it's two out of?
Yeah, we have two, we have two new cards this time that are expressing.
Okay. The two out of 27 of the condos object.
Yes.
Okay.
James Sheets, I'm attorney, speaking on behalf of the Thirsty Sportsman. I'm at 3100 St. John's Road, Des Moines, Iowa, 50312. Thank you. I wanted to go through the actual findings of fact that were made, both in the summer and then just presented, because I think they're of, of your consideration and importance, both of, of decisions made here in July and the one before you. The hearing officer has just brought to your attention an exhibit here where the range was basically between 80 and 85. And, and that's, that's fully compliant with the dB. Having said that, we need to go back to what was presented for the Exhibits A through J in, in, in July. And all of those readings, except for one or two idiosyncratic, barely above, not perceptibly audible, bounces above 95, they were compliant month in, month out. And this was brought to the Board's attention as a violation. The hearing officer spoke to, to these compliant behaviors as ongoing violations. And I believe that this is factually incorrect. The dB at 95 says if you're at 95 below, you're compliant. It is not a violation. If you, you're on the road at 55 mile an hour, you're going 55, 53, you don't get stopped. If you're going 55 and you got stopped by an officer, you would question the judgment of that. You would say, that's biased. I'm going 55 and you arrest me for going 55, when the limit is 55. And so the findings of fact brought to your attention in July, I think, demonstrate fully the full compliance at a 95 percent decibel level, as it was requested by you, the Board, in, in January. These were consistently interpreted, and I believe incorrectly, as violations. And that speaks to the issue of how do you interpret data? Do you, do you interpret it in the cold light of impartial reason? Or do you look for a cause to advocate and put into those facts a violation that doesn't exist? And so I think the hearing didn't fully resent, represent what I think were the true conclusions of what has gone on. I also want to note, my client asked for a continuance because his attorney was not present, and this Board denied that. And my client, at no time, was informed by his counsel that his counsel was withdrawing. And as you know, or may know, the rules of attorney representation, representation require that if you resolve, if you withdraw from representation, you must inform the client. Nothing was presented to you, as I know it. You looked at one overhead from the attorney to you stating he was withdrawing. No such, it wasn't CC'd. He didn't know. He came up. He was surprised. His attorney, because his attorney wasn't here, and you denied it. In fact, you even said, someone said, it doesn't matter if you have an attorney now. It's not even going to affect what we do here or what the outcome is. I don't understand that. And I think that's wrong. Because the, the function of attorney, Mr. Kelly, understanding of the city's attorney, is to interpret the law and to ameliorate solutions to legal problems. Okay? So I think the Board discounted the fact that he was surprised by the fact that his attorney wasn't present. He didn't even receive notice of him as attorney. You went forward and you denied that in the motion. That is an error of law, I believe. Okay? And so we have to go forward here. I think what happened on July is that you substituted the 95 for the 85. Now, in January, in the 95, I really admired what was done. They brought in a consultant. They did measurable, verifiable readings, and they presented them to the Board for your consideration. They were compliant with the ordinance. You asked questions. What is the ordinance? How does it affect the grounds? Those were good questions. Well, the findings were, it doesn't go above 60 at the property threshold into the apartments. And it doesn't go between 40 and 35, excuse me, 43 and 37 inside the building. 43, 37, fully compliant in, in any scenario. To focus on a 37, a 43, that's focusing a little too hard. Okay? And I think we're situated, we have a situation here where these hearings have been dogged by one complaintant. Well, why do I say that? Because in review of the evidence, I see one complaint consistently. I don't see more than one complaint consistently. In fact, the hearing officer, Margaret Lamarche, in a related ruling, proposed decision, has taken cause as a finding of fact that the complaintant, the principal, the ongoing complaint in this case, is a person of comparatively overly sensitive or sensitive to noise sensibilities.
If you are going to introduce some findings of fact and conclusions of law from another hearing when, where different or other evidence was presented, would you please give us a copy of the findings of fact and conclusions of law? I don't object to you talking about it, but I.
No, I have it right here.
You understand what I'm saying.
I'll read it. I'll enter it.
Just put it under the.
Yeah, okay. Excuse me. It says the review, oh, excuse me, in the findings. That's all right, I'll turn off the screen. Over the past six months, the business has continued to constitute a nuisance for surrounding property owners. This is a conclusion of law. It is not a statement of fact. I can't present a statement of fact that you made in support of what I'm saying right now. The regulations limiting the maximum allowance of sound inside the tavern, it's a restaurant, to 95 has not been sufficient in mitigating noise. That's a conclusion. It's unsupported with fact.
So you're referring to the decision and order of this Board, dated July 25, 2012?
Yes.
Not a separate order of a separate administrative.
No. I can refer back to the oral statements just entered previously on Exhibits A through G that the hearing officer brought in about 10 minutes ago as sufficient evidence of what I'm referring to.
Before we go farther, could, could you please let us know whether or not you've had an opportunity to review the staff recommendations?
Yes.
And whether or not you object to them?
Yes, of course. Yes, I fully object.
Are you objecting to the staff recommendation?
Well, of 85, yes. Not to 95, to 85, yes. And I move for a motion to amend or to enlarge the findings of the July findings and the orders thereof.
But, but there was an order given pursuant to the July 25th hearing?
Yes, sir.
And your client received it? And he did not appeal from it?
No. But what I'm speaking to right now refers to the issue of compliance and the interpretation of compliance before the Board right now on this particular matter. So when we have a nuisance issue, under Iowa law, a nuisance instance requires a substantial substance. Not a de minimis, not a tiny one, but one that is substantially large. Don't worry about it. And I bring it to the Board's attention regarding the word nuisance being considered right here before you. The nuisance has to be understood in terms of a reasonable cut or substantial interference.
You understand, don't you, that these are findings of fact, and if you want to call them conclusions of law, that were entered on July 25th?
Yes, sir.
And your client got a copy of these?
Yes, sir.
And you had an opportunity to appeal those?
Yes.
Those findings, and those findings were not appealed?
Sir, I understand. I'm bringing this before your matter because in regards to decision-making process used on that ruling, which is present, I believe, currently before the Board.
Yes, but if you don't like the findings of fact and conclusions of law or the order that proceeds from it, then you should appeal that to District Court. That's the way this process works. Now, we're bound by our previous findings of fact and conclusions of law.
Right.
We can't now say, oh, we're changing our mind. It ought to go to 95. We're bound by what we did.
This matter is also subject to further petition.
Fine.
Sir, is, is that correct?
I think I'm going to defer to our city legal. I talked to him just a little bit ago.
Yeah.
And.
It's a jurisdictional matter. After 30 days, you can't appeal.
All right.
The decision is closed.
Okay. But the issue of 95 versus 85 is subject of your immediate scrutiny and the reasons for that, sir?
Well, that's a fact that was found. It was, it was, I presume, argued over. The Board found that 95 was not a, was not a threshold that prevented the nuisance from, from happening. 85 was.
Right.
So, leaves it 80, that was improper.
And before that, you had ruled six months before that, or, as a 95. And how you, how you interpret this 95 and the 85 is a matter. Is a live, color of a matter.
Rule in July was 85.
Sorry?
Rule in July was 85.
And it was immediately changed in the course of that hearing from 95, sir? And I'm asking you that if you revise back up to the 95?
I, you do understand that you're time for appeal on that decision and order has run out.
I understand that. There's a 30-day deadline. Okay. But what the Board has in its competence, as I speak, is the understanding of the term nuisance and what that means in an ordinance. Is that correct, sir?
In my view, standing behind City Legal, you had 30 days if you were going to appeal that. You let that elapse. The next thing that's on here, right now, we're just looking at a review. We're not asking to change anything. We're going to review it. That's why the zoning enforcement officer stepped up. Now, depending on what our decision is based on this review. Then you have an opportunity to come back here, petition us again, to get it back up to 95. It's got to be, it's got to be considered a separate appeal because we're not, we're not discussing it. They haven't been noticed to the neighbors. So in this respect, we're just going to review this. If you feel that you want to do the 95 percent, you have more than, than your rights to do that. But that's done on a separate deal. We can't do that today, and we will not do that today.
Okay. On the 85, the client has brought, made various efforts to mitigate noise as he was instructed to do. He's changed the ventilation on two different vents so they're no longer direct vents. And brought in a sound technician to modify the noise downward. And these are operative right now and affect and have been evidence of their continued compliance and efforts to work with the Board. Okay? As there is not any violations, I'm glad the hearing officer didn't use, she used the word balance because before her word was violation. And I think that's an important distinction. And it is. And so while the client, my client, is compliant, I think in any hearing on the matter of nuisance, any hearing on the matter of nuisance, the term nuisance, the scope of what a nuisance the term nuisance, the scope of what a nuisance is, is present and alive to your consideration. And I think it's ill-advised to dismiss that as not relevant, sir. Okay? And we move, will be moving, we have been captive to one complaint of sensitive sensibilities to noise. We've had business loss. Nothing in the board's understanding of this has showed any understanding of appreciation that my client runs a neighborhood restaurant, which the neighborhood enjoys and likes. People don't always like loud music. It's a matter of personal preference unless it's a violation. Okay? And so we all make ad hoc comments, and you can appreciate those, I believe.
Right.
All right. So can I object to that my client is compliant? No. But I certainly want to bring out the history here, and I think it's been- I think she spoke on the history. She brought it in, she opened up the door. Back to 2007, it's relevant. The history here. Bella Roanoke, we got rid of, we got rid of that at considerable-
We've given you enough time here, so I'm going to give you one minute to close it off. But I want to tell you, if you're looking for a second appeal, I would save a lot of your verbiage for another appeal to get it back up to 95 if that's what you're trying to do.
Okay.
We're not going to do that today. We're just reviewing the 85.
I've repeatedly told you, and I've repeatedly told you, I'm interpreting this within the context of today's proceedings brought in by the hearing officer. And I think that's clear. It's relevant. It's relevant. I'm sorry, it's relevant.
Okay. We'll hear more as it goes on, so do you want to wrap it up?
Yes, sir. All right. The current remedy before the board is, there was discussions, it's 85, whether this would allow music or not, or if so, whether this would allow live music or amplification. And currently, it allows for a live but very highly modified orchestration. This is a, most of the music there is rock and roll. It's been limited in its application, say, no drums, et cetera. I hope I'm not boring you, Mr. Pence. You look dazed.
Why don't you wrap it up? You know, you've gone too far. All I need to know at this point is, are you here to contest the 85 or you accept the 85?
We contested, of course.
Okay, that's fine. That's all I need to know anymore.
I made that clear seven minutes ago, sir.
Well, you rambled for about eight, so, thank you. Anybody else here to speak in support? Nope. Okay. Anybody else to speak in support? Yes, please. I think I could use some.
Hi, my name is Nikki Gorla, 23687 Fillmore Street, Swan, Iowa 50252. I've been here before and gone through and heard this history. I own the building that this low bar is in. The history is inaccurate. There has not been three bars in this space. There has been Bela Noche. They changed their name because they were having problems. That's how it got to prestige. Same people, clearly separate from who is in there now. It's an entirely different type of operation. And I guess I don't have anything else to say other than I feel my tenant is having the burden of proving himself against what Bela Noche did. But I just want to clarify, there's only been two bars in here.
We're trying to focus on if 85 is working.
I understand that.
Okay.
I just wanted to clarify the information that was given to you.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anybody else here to speak in support? Is there anybody here to speak in opposition?
Hello, my name's Connie Laverens. I live at 936 McKinley Avenue, Unit 6. Thank you for the 85 decibels. My life has been much better. I appreciate it. It's been much better. I heard a little bit of it Saturday night when I came home from watching my Hawkeyes get beat by Penn State. But it was about 1:00, and I let it go. But it is much better. Thank you. I think I am evidently the one person that he keeps, that they were talking about that keeps complaining, and I think I brought you my neighbor's documents that they've complained. They just don't come forward. But 85 is much better, and thank you.
Glad to hear it. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Can I ask Connie a quick question?
Yes, go right ahead.
Okay. Now Connie, thanks for your description. The Cyclones also lost, so I was disappointed about that, too. You know, as you said, you came home from watching the game, you heard the bar. You understand that you might hear some sounds coming from a bar once in a while, just very slight emanating through a wall, or they open a door, people come and go, right?
Yes.
But from your perspective, the 85 is-
It's much better.
It's compatible that you can live in your condominium, they can run their bar at 85, and everybody can coexist.
Absolutely. It's been wonderful.
Okay. Glad to hear that.
One other thing, have you talked with the bar on a one-on-one basis or just in passing when you come down here?
No, I haven't. I don't. I haven't been down.
So they don't know that you're much happier now with-
Well, I sent my card in a few weeks ago. I didn't, I don't know how it goes, if they get cards or not, or if they get copies of what I-
And your card was in support-
Yes.
-of the 85. There were two no's, and those came from somebody else.
Yeah.
So clearly, you're not the only person that has had issues with it. It's, you know, you're just the voice for the people.
I seem to be the voice. I seem to be the face that complains the most. When I was at the Wallace Building with the police, the neighbor on the other side of me was there. I was not alone at the Wallace Building. I believe I've been here two times with my neighbor on the other side, which is Tony, who is now on his honeymoon right now, so he can't be here. I brought you papers from the other two neighbors from 8 and 9 last time that they heard the noise, it kept them awake. I also brought you papers from a house over on Titus, Doris. I don't believe Doris is there. I went to visit with her, but, I mean, I'm not the only one that's complained.
We know that.
And I'm not the only one that's heard this. But I seem to have been singled out today, and I'd rather resent that. But I'm okay with 85.
I would, too, because you wrote a very complimentary card. That should be noted.
Is that it?
Okay, that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're allowed three minutes for rebuttal for last statements. And have you guys seen the cards yet? Do you want to get a copy of those? Thanks, Jake.
In order to make sure that we have our order correct, so we don't run into a problem-
Again?
I think if I could have a chance to rebut, then he can rebut again.
Okay. Order doesn't make any difference to me, so.
Okay, well, I just didn't want to have us have to reopen again or something.
Okay.
I think what she pointed out, that when we went to 95, it was a compromise. It was a discussion that was held before the board after sound readings were taken, and we looked at the building, we tried to reach a compromise. When we went through the testing on the 95, they hit it a couple times, they went over it a couple times. It was technically a violation to go over, but I was more concerned with the bouncing between the 90 and the 95, which was still causing problems for the neighbors. And so we decided that 85, we would try 85. That seems to have worked. I think that the neighbors are much happier, although you did see more complaints from different neighbors today. So I think tweaking it to 85 seems to have worked. As far as the three bars, every time somebody comes in and gets a new liquor license, we count it as a new bar. So if they change their name, get a newer liquor license, I mean, I don't think the count's what's appropriate to be considered. What's appropriate is that the thirsty sportsman is the one that is currently the actor that is causing the nuisance. So I think we're correctly with who we need to be. If there are no questions, I-
Thanks, Ma'am. Mr. Cheats?
Yes, on the issue of whether my client has reached out to the complaint, I believe he had, did send a letter to the complaint asking for information or her opinion, and as I understand it, she did not respond.
I've never received any letter from him.
Okay. Did you send that by mail, sir? The presumption is, if it's sent by mail, it's received. Okay. So the presumption is she received it. And I want to specifically state, the objection was made, at least at the construction level and there formally, to the 85 as a standard of compliance. I want to state and object, the term nuisance is per se relevant. The understanding of that is per se relevant in the assessment of a nuisance at 85 or 95 decibels as worthy of the board's contention. And I think it cannot be dismissed in the seriousness of what law is. And I say that respectfully.
Thank you. Close of public portion, go to board decision.
Move staff recommendation.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
I'll skip it.
Okay, all those in favor, raise your hand and say aye. Motion carries six to nothing. Item nine is conditional use permit and variance at 727 Southeast 14th Street. And we've got, wait a minute. We got a prime view on that one, too.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, item number nine is a request for a conditional use permit for the existing gas station convenience store at the northeast corner of Mari Street and Southeast 14th Street. It's the shortstop, has BP gasoline. They are requesting the ability to sell alcoholic liquor at the gas station in addition to the beer and wine that they are already able to sell. Some history on this application. They had applied back in April, at the same time that the city council initiated a moratorium on new Class E liquor licenses. So at that time, this was continued to May, and then in May, it was continued by the board again indefinitely until the moratorium on Class E liquor licenses expired. And that did expire in September, at which time new regulations were adopted. And following that, this item was put on the next available zoning board of adjustment agenda. As you'll see in your packet, the new code reg requirements put in place in September are in the report. For a gas station or convenience store selling alcoholic liquor, which is the second column, they are required to get a conditional use permit and provide 500 feet of separation from any school, church, park, or daycare licensed with the state of Iowa. And they must also provide a fourth mile separation from any other Class E liquor license. And before the moratorium in the place, they only had 150-foot separation requirement from any parks, schools, church, or daycares. And there was no separation from any liquor or Class E liquor licenses. So that is new. As far as the 500 feet of separation goes, there is one church that is within 500 feet. It is the Grace Tabernacle. The church, it's on Southeast 15th or Southeast 14th Court. It is within 190 feet. So they do need a variance of the separation requirements. There aren't any churches or other churches, schools, parks, or daycares within 500 feet, and there aren't any other existing Class E liquor licenses within a quarter mile. There is a get-and-go gas station catty corner, but they have not ever applied for a Class E liquor license. Let me go through some exhibits. Exhibit B is the decision and order in April, when this application was originally filed. At that time, the board continued it to May to allow the city council to consider relief of the moratorium on new Class E liquor licenses. The exhibit C is the documents from the city council meeting in May, when the city council considered a request from the applicant for relief of the moratorium. That includes the, I guess, financial information the applicant had submitted that they felt demonstrated they had a hardship created by the moratorium. Ultimately, the city council denied the request for relief of the moratorium. So in May, as exhibit D shows, this board continued the request indefinitely until the moratorium expired. That's how we are, why we're here today. In September, the city council amended the city codes, as reflected here in exhibit E, to require the 500 feet of separation from churches, parks, schools, and daycares, and the quarter mile separation from existing Class E liquor licenses. We can go through some site photos. Here's the existing business. As you can see, it's the shortstop or the superstop convenience store. They have BP fuel sales. Exhibit G is another photo from the corner. You can see their sign here shows, or says liquor. The history there is, a couple years ago, they did in fact have a liquor license. They were able to sell liquor as long as they had a separate room, a separate cashier from the gas station convenience store. So if you go in this building, there still is that separate room where they used to have liquor sales. However, the sale of liquor there had lapsed for longer than six months, so they lost their nonconforming rights to that, which requires them to come back to this board. Another photo. This is the view from Southeast 15th, I'm sorry, Southeast 14th Court. There's a house that's just to the east of the site, separated by a 14-foot wide alley. This building right here is the superstop convenience store. And this is another view. You can see there's another house that's fairly close to the convenience store. The next exhibit is item, or exhibit K, just the police reports. There've been a couple incidents in the past 12 months, but just the, I guess, it's not like there's been a long record of police reports. And then the consent cards, right here. There's just two cards in opposition. One of them is from the church that they need the separation requirement from, and then one from the single-family house to the east, and then the card in support from the property to the north. Staff doesn't believe that they've satisfied the criteria necessary for granting a conditional use permit. As noted, they don't meet the separation requirements, which were put into effect in September. There's the church within 190 feet, so they don't, they need the variance to that separation requirement. We don't feel that they've satisfied the criteria necessary for granting a variance, as noted in the staff report. In order to grant a variance, the board asks to demonstrate a necessary hardship exists, which includes proving that without the requested variance, there is no other economic or any other beneficial or productive use of the land. We feel that there are other productive and beneficial uses of the land. Here it's Zone C2, which allows a whole list of uses, including gas stations. So I guess for those reasons, we've recommended denial of the variance in the conditional use permit.
Bert, if they had maintained that separate area to sell, and even though that's within 500 feet of a church, would they have been grandfathered in?
They would have been grandfathered in. They would have had to come to this board for a conditional use permit before December 13, I'm sorry, before December of 2013, to have the conditional use permit to sell alcoholic liquor. When the city council amended the ordinance last year, that was one of the requirements they put into effect, was that all existing businesses selling alcoholic liquor have to get a conditional use permit by December 13. However, the existing ones wouldn't be subject to the separation requirements that are in effect. So technically, they would have kept their liquor license, they would have had to still get a conditional use permit, but not the variance to the separation requirement.
Any other questions? No.
Bert, two quick ones. It's my understanding that there might be some construction changes to this intersection at some time with the ML King connector and some other- at some time with the ML King Connector and some other DOT improvements. Do you know how that will affect either the appellant's property or that Southeast Fourteenth Court?
I guess I...
I'm not trying to pitch on the spot, I'm just curious if you know off the cuff.
Yeah. The south, or the East Martin Luther King Junior Parkway, the Southeast Connectors, it's called, goes underneath Southeast Fourteenth Street, just north of Scott Avenue. I know the long-term plans is to make Southeast Fourteenth Street the southbound pair, and then, I believe Southeast Fifteenth Street would become the northbound.
There'd be like a second viaduct built, correct? And then, so it may change the whole neighborhood down here?
Yeah, it might change that, but I don't believe it would impact
Okay.
the access to this property at all.
And a second quick question. The church that's located there on South Fourteenth Court, do you have any idea, are there daily activities there? Is there any preschool, daycare center?
I don't, I drove by last week, and I didn't
Okay.
see anything going on in the middle of the day.
All right, thank you.
Bert, now, they do comply, the church is a hundred and seventy feet away?
A hundred and ninety.
A hundred and ninety. So, they, it's perfectly legitimate that they sell wine and beer.
Correct.
And the thing that I always worry about is, what about the competition? And you're saying that the get-and-go that's catty-corner to this place has not applied? They sell wine and beer, but they've never applied for liquor.
Right, right.
So, insofar as competition is concerned, there's nobody across the street?
There aren't any Class E liquor licenses within a quarter-mile
Okay.
or selling for off-premise consumption.
Now, if they were to go by the church, by the landed building, then we could possibly grant.
Then they would need that variance. They would need the separation requirements.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Thanks, Bert. Applicant, representative of the applicant?
Are, is the applicant here?
No. Any idea?
No, I guess, I assumed he'd be here. I know we've sent everything to him, I talked to him in September, and when...
Was the applicant the property owner in this case, or the actual liquor li, or the...
He would be both.
The license? It's the same, same person?
Tony DeSahn is the property owner, he...
What's the property owner's name?
Tony DeSahn. He had been leasing it to some other people who had the previous Class E liquor license, but they had let that lapse. And he had said he wasn't aware that it had lapsed. So, after he lost his tenant, then he took over operation of the gas station.
So, we don't have anyone here for this potential liquor store in Southeast Fourteenth?
Not a liquor store, just a convenience store with liquor sales.
Somebody asked, is there anybody here to speak in opposition?
They do sell gas.
Yeah.
Might have anybody here?
And also, I just wanted to point out, as noted in the staff report, if the board does grant the separation to the variance requirement, that decision gets forwarded to the city council, who could
Okay.
re-kick it back to this board for reconsideration.
And we don't have anybody here opposed or object, so, any last questions for staff? It seems like kind of one-sided, but close the public portion and go to board decision.
Move staff recommendation.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. All those in favor, raise your hand, say aye. Motion carries six to nothing. All right, item ten. We've got communication on that as well. Conditional use permit and variance.
I do know they're here.
This could be thirty-eight oh four Hubble?
Yes.
These are all, kind of got stacked up from the moratorium, is that right?
Right. Item number ten is a request for a conditional use permit for a liquor store, where more than forty percent of the sales would be derived from alcohol or tobacco products. They've been operating right now as a gas station convenience store, but they haven't been able to meet the minimum required fifty percent threshold for sales from goods other than alcoholic liquor, wine, beer, and tobacco. The subject property is Nat's Liquor. It's at the northeast corner of Hubble Avenue and East Thirty-Eighth Street. They are subject to the, I guess, as I mentioned earlier, the city council amended the requirements last month that set new separation distances. Since they would be a liquor store, they first need the conditional use permit, two, they need to have a five hundred-foot separation from any church, school, park, or daycare, and then third, they need the fourth mile separation from any other Class E liquor license. In this case, there is a church, experience church, that's just located eighty feet to the south, so they don't meet that separation requirement. And then there's a licensed daycare within this apartment complex, located three hundred and seventy feet to the east. And then there is also a existing QuickTrip convenience store located seven hundred and forty-eight feet to the southwest, which is within the fourth mile separation distance. So, in addition to the conditional use permit, they need three variances to separation. Exhibit B is just the revised separation requirements that the city council put into place in September. Item, or exhibit number C is a site sketch that shows the layout of the site. It's on the north side of Hubble Avenue. They have an existing convenience store that measures approximately twenty-four feet by forty-three feet. There's a canopy here that used to be above fuel pumps, but those fuel pumps have, were removed in two thousand and ten. Here's a photo of the site from the corner of East Thirty-Eighth and Hubble. You can see the building, as well as a little accessory building, and then the canopy. This photo here, I know it's not very clear, it's raining. There's an existing six-foot tall wood fence along the north side of the property line that separates those, the residential use to the north, and then the bank to the east. And this is just a photo of the back of the property. They have a gravel parking lot back there. And then exhibit G is, now I'll pass this around, is evidence submitted by the applicant, with their application, that shows they've been a good neighbor, and that they have neighbors who are in, customers who are in support of them getting this conditional use permit. Exhibit H is the police reports. I only saw the one incident from January of this year, where there was a, I guess, case at the site. Otherwise, they, there haven't been any documented incidences. Then the consent map, we had several cards come back in opposition, and, I'll just pass this around. And then we also had an email from the Sheridan Gardens Neighborhood Association, which is, it's located just across Hubble Avenue to the south. So, this site technically isn't in the Sheridan Gardens neighborhood, but it is just across the street. They're also concerned about this property being considered a liquor store. As I mentioned earlier, they haven't met the criteria necessary for granting a conditional use permit. They have, they don't meet the five hundred feet of separation from any church, school, park, or daycare, because there's the church across the street, and then the daycare within less than five hundred feet. And they also don't meet the quarter-mile separation from a Class E liquor license, as there's the QuickTrip within a quarter-mile to the southwest that has a Class E liquor license. We also, staff doesn't believe they've satisfied the criteria necessary for granting a variance to the separation. One of the criteria for granting the variances, they show an unnecessary hardship, which includes demonstrating that without the variances, there's no economic or beneficial use of the property. We feel that being Zone C two, there are quite a few commercial uses that are permitted on this. So, for those reasons, we've recommended denial. And then, I also just wanted to point out, in the staff report, we laid out what they can do to continue selling alcoholic liquor. As I mentioned, this, right now, is classified as a food sales establishment, or again, it's not a, we used to have a use called a convenience store, but when the code was rewritten, we reclassified the convenience and grocery stores to food sales establishments. So, well, and as long as they meet the fifty percent threshold for liquor, alcohol, or liquor, wine, beer, and tobacco, as long as they sell less than fifty percent, they're still considered a food sales establishment, which would allow them to sell alcoholic liquor with a conditional use permit from this board. So, I would just point out that there are other options available if the...
Bert, we don't know what their split is right now, do we?
No, they haven't been able to meet the fifty percent threshold.
I just want to clarify a little bit. It's very confusing.
Who are you?
Sudanovic.
I know.
Public enforcement officer.
Got to have it for this.
I'm sorry.
I know who you are.
I think it's a little confusing, and so I'm going to try and step through what the council has requested. They, this particular establishment was considered a grocery store, food sales, at fifty-fifty, fifty percent merchandise, which included tobacco and fifty percent alcohol. The council has changed that, so that, they changed definitions. It would now be defined as a limited food sales retail establishment, because it's under twelve thousand square feet. At the beginning of two thousand and fourteen, the end of two thousand and thirteen, they would have to meet a sixty-forty standard to keep their liquor license, which would mean, and it takes out tobacco. So, that's what makes it more retail than liquor store. They don't feel they can meet that threshold. We've not asked them to produce those records. They're coming of their own volition, because they don't believe that they can meet the sixty-forty when that becomes the standard. They would then, they'll be a limited retail food establishment that then will not meet the separation requirements. So, you can't grant them their liquor license, because they don't meet the separation requirements. It's a change in use for them, from a retail establishment, limited retail food sales, to a liquor store. So, that's what kicks in the separation requirements. Does that help at all? Clarify what council is directing?
A little better, that's for sure. They're before us as a liquor store.
They're before us to become a liquor store.
Yes.
Yes.
And otherwise, they wouldn't be before us.
Correct.
Is that...
But they will still have to meet the sixty-forty percentages if they're going to stay in business after two thousand and thirteen.
What's included in the sixty, what's included in the forty percent is all the liquor sales and all the tobacco sales? Is that right?
Yeah, tobacco doesn't count toward merchandise.
That's right. So, it can't go more than forty percent
Yes.
liquor, beer, wine, any liquor, and tobacco? So, what they're doing is, nobody is asking them to come here, except they're doing this of their own volition, because they do not think they're going to meet the sales requirement.
Correct.
And when does that sales requirement kick in?
End of two thousand and thirteen.
The end of two thousand and thirteen, or the beginning?
They have to meet it by December thirty-first, January first, two thousand and fourteen.
Okay.
We will start.
Looking at it.
Looking at it, yes. We are asking proactively for businesses to understand what the ordinance is going to do to affect them, and we've been giving that information out, so that they can figure out how to meet that business plan.
When January first of two thousand and fourteen comes about, and if they walk into your office and say, "Look, on the thirty-first, we did thirty-nine percent sales of liquor and sixty percent sales." Do you have any requirement that has to, for a time period, that they're presenting you records from?
We normally request audit for a year.
So, you'd want the previous year, you'd want the whole of two thousand and thirteen?
Yep.
I see, okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Thanks, Sue Ann. Okay, applicant, representative of the applicant?
Hello, respected member. I'm not much of a talker, but...
You don't have to be much, but I do need your name and address.
My name is Benny Ned, and I run the store at thirty-eight oh four Hubble Avenue. I worked for the judicial branch of the state of Iowa for four years. My dad wanted to take retirement, and he asked me to take over his businesses. I did. And when I did take over, the requirements that are in place now weren't there. Just because we are concerned that we might not be able to stay in business after two thousand and fourteen is the reason that we're here and requesting this permission to switch over to a different license, so that we can stay in business. The church that is in place, it's the back of the church, the entrance to the church is on a different side of the street, which is probably about eight hundred, I'm not sure, probably about eight hundred feet. The come-and-go that has a liquor license to sell liquor, as a store, we had, we were, we had been in place as a, as a store to sell liquor before they got their liquor license, and we, we've, that, we've been there, we got our license to sell liquor prior to them, and I don't know if that matters or not. And it's just, this is a request to, for me to stay in business. We discussed it with Sue Ann, what exactly I need to do with comply, to comply with the city and the zoning commission to stay in business after two thousand and fourteen. This is what she recommended to do, and this is, I just, this is our livelihood now, and I just want to stay in business, and that's the request I have.
Questions? No.
Benny, how long ago did you leave your job with the judicial branch to take over this?
Well, I had been running the store for about a year and a half
Okay.
after I left the job at judicial. And I left, I resigned there in two thousand and eleven, August.
Okay. In August of two thousand and eleven, because there has been a lot of discussion and concern among citizens in the city council about this whole
Yes.
liquor thing for quite a while. I was just, just wondering if before you made that decision to leave your other full-time employment, you were kind of aware that...
Well, I was aware that there was discussions on it. I don't know if it would go this far, that
Right.
we would be in threat of shutting down our business.
Okay.
And my wife was in the IT field as well. She, she kind of joined me in the work as well, and we've taken good care of our store. We've done everything that's required of us. We've, we don't have police calls, we don't have loitering at our businesses, we don't have people hanging out at our store. We try to do everything that we can do to be a part of the community, and like, be a respectful member of the community and of the, of the neighborhood. And I don't, I don't know exactly what else to say, but we support local teams. We have, just last, this summer, I saw, driving up to the store, those little girls standing in the heat, when it was really hot, they were asking people for money. And I asked them how much exactly they needed to raise, so that they can be, not be in the sun, or what, the sun out there standing. So, we, we started sponsoring those guys, the little Yankee baseball team. So, I'm trying to be a part of the community. I just want to stay in business. I'm trying to do anything I need to do to be, to stay in business. I, I don't think I have many complaints against me as a businessman. We try to do any, we work with Sue Ann, whatever she recommends that we need to do, we do those things. And it's just a, it's just a request in front of you guys that, for me to stay in business.
And you are classified as a liquor store right now?
No.
No?
No.
Oh, okay.
I'm classified as a...
Limited food?
Limited food store.
Okay, all right. Still got some ideas, so. Any other questions? Also, Benny, you might want to take a look at the, some of the neighbors who are objecting, they had some comments on there. It doesn't influence us, I mean, we look at them, but you might want to take a look at those as well. at those as well.
Definitely.
Okay. Thanks, Jake. Any other questions?
I have a question for staff.
Okay, let's look here at the, is there anybody else here to speak in support? Is there anybody here to speak in opposition? Okay, we have some last questions for staff.
Yes. Let's talk about within 500 feet of the church. We had this discussion before, when we had a senior citizens center of some sort.
It was a four-mile, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the playground equipment.
But that was just to sell beer and wine.
It was a park.
No, it was, it was a park.
Right.
They haven't taken advantage of it.
No kid used, but go ahead.
This is, yeah, you...
Go ahead.
Right across the street, it's Experience Church. It recently purchased the former school from the Des Moines Public School District, and they are occupying it as a church, and they have like preschool use in there.
Bert, what's...
Where do you measure? You said...
It's measured property line to property line.
Right.
The way we measure, so it's 80 feet from the subject property to the property owned by Experience Church.
Right. So, but how far is it to the front entrance? How do you get into the church?
The church is oriented towards East Douglas Avenue, so...
So would he be 500 feet away from the entrance to the church?
Possibly. I know the licensed daycare is within this apartment building to the east, and that is within 380 feet.
That was my second question. When did the licensed daycare center come into existence?
Well, this one has been, I don't know when it came into existence. It has a, it's been licensed with the state of Iowa from at least October 2011. I think they get licensed every year.
But do they check with us to see where our liquor licenses are before they license a daycare center? Are they prohibited from being within the feet thing to a liquor store?
No, they're not.
So you can stop a liquor store from being properly licensed by opening a daycare center?
The daycare would have to be in existence when the conditional use permit is considered for the liquor establishment. We couldn't revoke a conditional use permit just because the liquor, or because a daycare moves in within 500.
No, but then they would have the status of being grandfathered in.
Right.
Okay. But then you could probably start a situation where you could be, try putting people out of business by opening daycare, strategically located daycare centers.
Right. I know you could put people out of business, but you could prevent new liquor...
Expansion of the business?
Expansions, or...
Or...
New businesses.
Patio licenses for the business?
The separation from taverns, I believe, a little different. For taverns, you would only need 150 feet, but you're right, if you would open up a daycare within 150 feet of an existing tavern, you could prevent it from expanding.
Now, has anybody measured the, you said it was 150 feet or something to the daycare center?
It was 380 feet from property line to property line.
And what's the requirement, 500?
500.
But by the time you get into the daycare center, is it 500 feet?
If you had to go on Hubble Avenue and then turn in their driveway, it probably would be, if you walked as...
And then go up to the second floor.
Not as the girl flies.
It's the way you'd have to go if you didn't have a helicopter.
Sure.
Are those, I used to live over in this area. I don't remember that, those buildings being a daycare center.
No, it's in-home buildings.
Oh, so those are apartments?
It's an apartment, and the lady is licensed.
Some woman has five kids.
She has a license.
I mean, this is kind of goofy.
Well, that doesn't, to me, doesn't seem like a daycare center. I thought maybe if those buildings were daycare centers, that obviously would be...
The way the ordinance is...
Like in-home versus a true center.
Right. If those buildings were true.
Like La Petite or something.
Right. It just says, "With a licensed childcare facility," is defined by Iowa Code, Chapter 237A.
Yeah, so you could just start opening these things next to liquor stores.
Or churches. We could have Mel and Tom's Church.
Yeah.
We could, yeah.
Go ahead.
There's a lot brainstorming here.
Can I ask a question of staff?
May I speak as a zoning enforcement officer? Sue Ann Donovan, Zoning Enforcement Officer, head of City of Des Moines. It has long been in the ordinance that we measure property line from property line. We don't do from how you would get to the entrance. That is basically impossible, a standard.
Right.
So we measure property line to property line.
And not just for liquor licenses, for other types of zoning enforcement?
All separations are measured property line.
Yes, but we can consider the separation, the spirit of the separation law, when we look at it, and they're asking for a variance.
I think the variance is based on hardship, or the impossibility to use the property in any other manner, not the separation, as you measure it or choose to measure it, but I could be wrong. As far as the daycare center, if you have a woman who has a daycare center for, under six children in her home, the state doesn't license that. It's a threshold of space and number of children before they license it. We're going off of the state database as to how they're licensing daycares.
Okay.
I think it's possible, I will entertain that, that somebody could decide to go around and open little daycares, so that they can stop liquor licenses from going in. I think it's highly improbable that somebody's going to think that way, but I've been proven wrong. That seems a little far-fetched. I think it's important for the board to understand that the council was very, very concerned about proliferation of classy liquor licenses in the city of Des Moines, and chose to implement these ordinances to be used across the board, in order to stop the proliferation. And this is the tool that was come up with, was the separation. I think the board, in my opinion, as a zoning enforcement officer, should look at the ordinance and the intent of council, and be bound by the intent of council. Now, I know you're separate boards, and you can act...
But if they're authorized to sell liquor now...
Wine and beer.
Only?
Yes.
They've not sold liquor?
Oh, do you have liquor now? Okay.
If they're authorized to sell liquor now, how is this the proliferation? He's just asking to do the same things he's doing now.
He is, but...
Because, because they changed the law on him.
He is.
Yeah.
But, and the council knew that this was going to happen, that limited...
But the council didn't provide anything for a business that relies on these sales. For example, it really works a kind of a partial condemnation of his business, you know?
No, it doesn't.
You can't do this anymore.
No, it doesn't. He has the right to do other businesses in there. It is not a condemnation of his property, it's not a taking. It's simply, he has to change his business model.
Even two years ago, when he opened as a food sales establishment, he would have had to meet the 50 percent threshold of selling merchandise other than alcohol or tobacco products, and he's not meeting that. So even if the ordinance wasn't amended this year or last year, he would have still needed to come to this board for a conditional use permit, to do, to continue doing what he's doing.
Okay.
Am I correct in my thinking that he really has a whole year to come up with a different business model? He can keep doing what he's doing, but he has a whole year to put another plan in place before anything has to change?
Absolutely.
I mean, and we have, I know that we have a whole lot of new housing, affordable housing that's going up in that area. I would think it would be the perfect opportunity. I think you're in a great location, and I think it's a perfect opportunity to now do, to be able to add to food sales or something.
Going back to the last item we talked about, where they had a separate area for the liquor sales, if he would wall off an area and have that for liquor sales only, how would that affect everything, since he's already selling liquor now?
Same, same consideration.
Okay.
It would just have a smaller space to steam the clout for the liquor.
And wasn't the walled-off thing part of the previous state law? And now that's changed, which then caused this whole...
Yes, the state law changing to allow...
It wasn't a city requirement to have the wall?
It wasn't a city requirement.
Okay.
It was the state law that changed all of this and put us in this.
So in the previous case, where they already had the separate one, they couldn't be grandfathered in?
If they had kept their classy liquor license, with a separate space, and it hadn't lapsed, yes, they would have maintained their legal non-conforming status.
But they never have.
But they let it lapse.
Okay.
So then they had to come back in.
That one, yeah.
Yep.
Okay. Okay.
One final question about site plan, distances. Straight across the church from the, from the appellant's location, there's a big area, it either looks like a playground gravel or a construction area, right there on the corner of the church. Is that a playground area?
I believe it's a former school playground, but this was...
Okay. All right, so those are playground structures and equipment we see there, and stuff like that, okay. And that would be within what, 150 feet of this location?
Property line to property line is 80 feet, from the building to the playground, maybe 150.
Thank you.
I have one more question. Could the church have a party and have liquor?
They would have to get the, especially the permit for a...
But they could do it.
For a one-time event.
I'd say it would depend on their denomination.
I'm just, my church is going to have a bender, and you wouldn't believe the number of kegs and things that are come, so I think it's an unfair measurement to have a distance from a church, when the reverse is not true.
It would, they would only be able to get a liquor license for a special event, if they wanted to...
I recognize that's different, but it still seems a bit unfair to me.
Any other questions for staff? Okay, hearing none, we'll close the public portion and go to board decision. I expected the silence on this one.
I have to recommend, I have to move staff recommendations.
No, we can't, Mr. Chair would really allow it.
Pardon? Well, nobody came and talked, no.
The staff talked after.
Oh, okay. Go right ahead.
On these cards, I would say that we have, within the last six months, hired a security person for the evening, from last, from three or four o'clock in the afternoon till closing time, that takes care of, if there's anything around, we did, went and talked, we went and talked to the neighbors before we came out and did this, when we got the signatures. And they asked, we asked them what, if, what we needed to do, if there was anything that bothering them, and that was bothering them, and if we needed to change anything. And they said to have a security guard, if anybody's around, just to check around, see everything is safe. So we have hired security for that, and the security worked from, sometimes from four till closed, sometimes from five till closed. On weekdays, it's five, and then on weekends, it turns into four. So regarding these cards...
And how late are you open?
Midnight.
Okay.
And you're not planning to change that, or change your hours? Midnight? Okay, okay.
Friday and Saturday till two, sorry.
Oh.
Okay. And what time do you open in the mornings?
Eight.
Eight, okay.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
All right, who's running the show here?
We're not trying to trick you.
Seven o'clock on weekdays, eight o'clock on Sundays.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
All right. Thank you.
It's fine, thank you. So Linda, yours is a motion to accept staff recommendations.
It is.
Let's discuss this before we quickly pass something.
Not asking for a second yet.
If you'll notice, right after staff recommendation, it says, "Should the board grant the conditional use permit and variance?" It goes over to the city council, to let the city council decide, or decide whether to remand this to us for further consideration.
Yes.
And the purpose of that is, that if we feel that there is a kind of a special circumstance here, that ought to be looked at, we can recommend that the following guidelines be considered, you know, in granting this, and this is a special circumstance. Now, I understand that ordinarily, if you're going to grant a variance, it's got to be, there's got to be this criteria, that criteria, the other criteria, but the thing that disturbs me the most about this is that their competition has a liquor license. That is a quick trip. And they're 748 feet away instead of 1,320 feet away. Seems to be far enough away to, you know, to have a separation. We have a situation here where a building that was never used before as a church is now a church. The, we have a situation where a daycare center is in an apartment building. But, I mean, I don't know how many kids you can put in an apartment building and still get a license, but evidently, she's got more than, what was it, seven?
Six.
Over six.
Over six, yeah.
More than six.
Got seven.
Greater than six.
So maybe, you know, it's a lot of cribs in there. But I guess what I'm saying is, I don't have a great deal of objection to give him a commercial liquor license on this street, on this intersection, you know, because I just don't see the neighbors up in arms about this. Could we see the map that objects?
Consent map?
Consent map?
Please do.
What's the place to the north? Is that the car wash?
The car wash is over here. This is a single-family house, is just to the north, which...
Okay.
There's a bank adjacent to the east, and then a single-family house to the north, and some one- and two-family houses directly across East 38th Street, which staff's never supported liquor stores that close to houses before the car wash, and then auto repair at the corner.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
Can I ask Bert a question while he's up here?
Yeah, might as well.
Bert, this might play into something down the road for me. Canopies for gas stations. When it's no longer a gas station anymore, can the canopy still be there?
It can still be there, yeah.
Okay, until when? Is, like if the...
It's destroyed by 60 percent.
All right, destroyed, oh, okay.
Or if it's deemed unsafe and declared a public nuisance.
All right, because I know there was a big debate, the Phillips 66 on Southwest 9th was a landscaper, or something about, that the canopy was still there, and you guys didn't like that, or something. So canopies can stay up at old businesses forever?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you.
There's no discussion here, so...
Okay, here, I'm going to throw something out here. I like these people, and I have a feeling that's where a lot of the sentiment goes here. Before this was a church, though, it was a school, and the school had a playground, and therefore, the same issues would have still applied. So whether the church comes in before or after, I don't know that that's as, as much of an issue as it may seem here, because the other use that was there prior, unless, if anybody recalls, was it abandoned for a long time?
It was closed for a while, but it, I mean, it was the school, it was a school, and then, when the school closed, it was a church. So it was emptied for a while, and the fire department had actually rented it.
Okay. But they maintain the grounds and let people use playground equipment and...
I don't know.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you.
I, you know, I agree with Tom. I do, I sincerely like these people. I drive by this all the time, and it's always in, you know, I don't, I don't see any problems there. I, the police report doesn't say anything, although I did think you got robbed a while ago. I don't see that on here.
It was probably...
Yeah, yeah. So I don't know why it's not showing up, because there have been, there have been some calls there that are not being reflected, but that's, that's not your responsibility to bring, that's ours. I guess what bothers me, though, is that I just see us, is having all these people come to us and wanting exceptions, and we've dealt with that. You know, we've dealt with this for the last two years, of everybody coming up, and we're selling liquor on every single street corner now. And so that's what bothers me. If we're going to allow somebody to do it, I would just soon allow these people, because I just feel like, like it's a good place. But really, by denying it, I, more than anything, I wish they would just withdraw it, because they don't have to do anything right now. And if they could just work on the next, for the next year, to put a plan in place to sell food, or do something different, so they could become a liquor store.
The things that, I agree.
A loaf of bread's five and a half dollars, and a bottle of liquor's 50 cents.
I don't know, I'm torn. I would go along with you, Tom, is what I'm saying.
Well, here's the thing that's different.
But don't be surprised if I don't go along with them down the road.
The ones that have been coming up, hadn't sold liquor before. The ones that have been coming up hadn't sold liquor before. You know, you look at the Quick Trip. You look at the come and goes, all those, they're coming, they don't, they never sold liquor before. Here's a businessman that already was selling liquor. Now, in effect, we, as a city, are going to say, we're going to take that away from it.
But that had changed, because you used to sell gas, and then you just slowly transitioned, because then it was a convenience store, and then he started selling the liquor, so, so there's been some history there, that this has kind of gradually-
And that, that could be true, but it, at this point, he is, he is licensed to sell liquor, and we're going to take it away.
Okay. If, depending on how it goes.
Depending on, on us, yeah.
But as of today, if, if he's not selling a certain percentage of food or whatever she said, he really can't be selling liquor. They just haven't audited him.
That right, Sue Ann? And then, Sue Ann, can I bother you a second?
Yeah.
I know who you are.
Sue Ann Donovan, zoning enforcement officer.
They have to go with the 60/40 rule now as a liquor store?
50/50.
50/50.
If you give, if you give them the conditional use to be a liquor store, they don't have to meet any percentage requirements.
Okay. Now, the second thing in my question is that if we vote to disallow that, they can continue operation until December 31st, 2013. Is that correct?
Correct.
And if they withdrew it, they could do nothing and then come before us a year from now.
They'd have to come in with the same request for a liquor store.
Right. But if we deny them now, they're just done for two years.
For a year.
For one year.
For one year.
Yeah.
Okay.
So it's a year no matter.
So it doesn't matter.
All right.
Right. Well, it's $300.
True. But if he withdraws it, he still has to reapply, too.
Under the same criteria?
Oh, no. Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Thanks, Sue Ann.
Thank you. Well, if there's any, I mean, if there was ever any doubt that the ordinance perhaps was hastily passed without full consideration of these businesses in paperheads like this, then this is probably the case to send to the city council to say, now look.
You decide.
Family-run operation, you know?
So we're really not deciding? We're just saying, we're going to let the city council decide.
No. What, what the rule is, is this. If we're going to do something besides deny-
Yes.
Then it's going to go up to the city council, and they can tell us to. They've considered it, and they either let it stand-
Yes.
Okay.
Or they kick it back to us.
Right.
Say reconsider.
And that's because this is a variance to a separation requirement.
That's right.
Got it.
Can Sue Ann talk again, please?
Does she want to?
Got some livelihood here, so, yeah, I'm interested.
Sue Ann Donovan, zoning enforcement officer. He's, if, in order to be a liquor store, that's a change of use from what he is right now, which is limited retail, limited food sales. He needs a conditional use permit, he needs a variance for the setbacks. If he, if he wants to come in as, in, at the end of 2013, as a limited food sales, a retail establishment under 12,000 square feet, and sell alcohol, he still has to have the variances for the setbacks if he can't meet the 60/40. I mean, he's going to have to have some relief, I think, at some point. If he just wants to sell wine or beer as a limited, he needs 40% of sales and 150-foot separation from the church, which is probably going to be easier to get, but he still needs a variance of the 150 feet, because he's 80-some feet from the church. So he's in an unfortunately unique situation where he's just kind of boxed in by, by other uses.
But that's the whole reason for the law.
It's exactly the whole reason for the law.
That's the whole reason for the law.
If you take the personalities out of it, and the fact that-
Yes.
-these are very nice people, and we don't have a problem with them and like them, if you take that out, and you're just looking at the ordinance, that is the reason for the ordinance, is to stop the proliferation of liquor sales in the city of Des Moines on every street corner, and to try and rein it in. The, the benefit of giving a conditional use permit, now, you, it runs with the land, so unless there's a vacancy, if he, if these nice people sell it, then you're, you've got somebody else in there that is not as good a business operator, but the conditional use permit then allows us to bring it back if it becomes a problem, and say to y'all, can you please withdraw the conditional use permit because we're having a problem on the site for the various reasons that are set out? I'm not trying to muddy the waters, I'm just, but you're right. The council passed the ordinance in order to stop proliferation, that's-
We said we don't want it. We don't want a liquor store on every corner.
Right. But it is before you to make the determination, so.
Can it, can, can I just ask the applicant one question? Do you have other locations? Don't you have some other locations?
Yes, I do run a store on Sackton Avenue across from Central City Liquor. It's a gas station.
Okay.
And that's the only one?
Yes, that's it.
Fast question, since he's up here. Have you removed the underground storage tanks at this location?
Yes.
Very good.
Or at Hubble?
Yes, yes, that location, okay.
Long time, when we, when they took out the pumps.
Okay.
Just made Mel happy, so let me tell you.
Right. Just didn't want to have, have a hanging chat on something else.
That's right. Any other questions while we-
Thank you, Stan.
No. Thank you. We're still in discussions, folks. We have one motion out, but we're still discussing, so.
Well, here's, here's the-
I'm going to withdraw that motion.
Okay. So we're-
We'll just start over.
Here's the deal we're supposed to do all the time on every case here. You've got to show your hardship based on that there's no viable use for things. We've, you know, if we're going to hang our hats on something here that might be really flying in the wind here, we, we got to come up with that, that there's, there's some kind of hardship here that this site could not be used for something else. If the owner flattened it tomorrow, he could put one of those Dunkin' Donuts franchises there that are coming to Des Moines, or you could convert-
That actually won't fit on that.
All right. Uh-huh, you've worked on some of those, yeah. But I, I need to hear that.
Here's the other thing I think is relevant to tag on to what you said. The council's intent was to prevent proliferation, and he has, he has this business existing, and, and the city council is functionally pulling the rug out from under him and changing his business outside of any other economic condition. And so I think, I agree with Tom that this is a perfect one to send up, because I would, I wish Quick Trip were sitting here, or somebody who gets to just blanket the city with them. This is a completely different situation, in my opinion, so I don't know if I want to craft the motion, but I like Sue, what Sue Ann Donovan said about the ability to have a conditional use permit and pull it back if, if the operation is, becomes a nuisance, so that this doesn't continue to pass on, but I don't, I don't think they should be able to pull the rug out from under him.
And I think you're, you're right, Jake. One thing that, that I heard Tom say, and it makes a lot of sense to me, is that the city council has the ultimate decision, whether we hear it again, whether they can say that's good, because, you know, I, I understand, it is stop the proliferation of liquor sales. So if, if this person's already doing it, then we're doing just the opposite. We're going out and taking them out, in my view.
I, I actually agreed with Tom's language of, it's a form of condemnation of a business.
Yeah.
And the site has got functional obsolescence to, to the idea of repurposing it as some other retail. I mean, there's, there's a litany of parking and setback and other, if you come in and make dramatic changes, correct me at any point, Eric, if I'm wrong, but if you make substantive changes to the site, then you're going to kick in setbacks, and, and then the parking variances are going to go through the roof. So I think Sue Ann has said it very well at one point. At some point in this continuum, there are going to be variances required.
Sue Ann, I want to ask one more question. If we should pass this, and it goes to the city council, what's the procedure at the city council level for hearing this? Do they just get the facts and figures, or does somebody present a case, or what, what actually does the council hear?
They, they would have the opportunity to, it's like Bonfoss went before council.
Yeah, uh-huh.
Yeah.
So these people would have the opportunity to make a presentation before the city council.
I believe so, yes.
Because otherwise, it'd just be on the agenda as just an item, vote yea or nay. There's no presentation required, though.
Council will vote to have you reconsider your decision, or not.
What, what I'm saying is just for council to hear it, though. Is there an actual-
Yeah.
-hearing that happens, or is it just an agenda?
This is not a decision, I think-
I, I understand.
And so I, I don't want to think, I don't want council to think that we're just arbitrarily saying, oh, go ahead and have a liquor license. We've listened to this case pretty thoroughly.
Right.
We, we think the circumstances are unique enough to at least let them consider rather than us.
Right.
Well, I believe the council has an opportunity to review the decision, but not reconsider in the sense of overturning it. And they can refuse to review it. Also, they can send it back to the board to re, maybe to reconsider.
Further review.
Yeah.
Okay.
Depending on what their wishes are.
But, but they just can't vote it down and say, we're not going to allow it?
No, they can't change what we-
They cannot change what you've done. They can either-
They can ask us to reconsider.
Right, got it.
Or they can ask you to reconsider based on-
So once again, we have more teeth than P and Z.
That's right.
We're not just a recommendation body to the council.
Correct, you're an independent-
Yes, okay.
Judicial body.
But I, I'm concerned that, that this just appears as an item on council agenda, and they're going to look at, say, well, what are these guys at the Board of Adjustment doing? They're letting liquor licenses go all crazy.
I, I believe that-
Especially in the first month after-
Transcripts and other things would be given to them with, with their, with the consideration before them. Yeah, it's not just that we hand them a piece of paper and say, here.
Yeah, aside. That's why I wanted to make sure, you know, because it, in a way, that might influence my decision. I just, I want to make sure that we're, we're hearing this the right way, and, and understand that what we pass on gets, gets looked at.
I believe that staff would make sure that they had a copy of the transcript attached to the roll call.
Okay, all right.
That would be the, the best thing, I think.
Any other questions while I got Sue Ann up there? Thank you, appreciate it. Awfully enlightening conversation, so have we gotten closer to putting a motion on the table?
Sure, I would move to grant a conditional use permit for a liquor store at 3804 Hubble Avenue, for a number of reasons, but basically because liquor sales are now permitted at the premises, that this will not encourage a proliferation of liquor stores throughout the city, that the owners have evidenced a history of a well-run and well-managed store, that the distance requirement from a church is nearly met by trying to, by calculating how one would get into the church from the liquor store, that the same can be true, can be said basically for the daycare center, which is quite a ways from the liquor store, and to stop there.
Are you going to say anything about the, the other liquor?
Oh, and the fact that the competition down the street has a liquor license. They are 748 feet away instead of 1,320 feet away, not material on a avenue like Hubble Avenue.
Yeah, maybe.
Do I hear a second?
I would offer a second, but I'd like to add friendly addition to it.
Amendment, sure.
Is that I believe that the, you know, part of our duty is to show difficulty, and I think the site itself presents, as I mentioned before, functional obsolescence in limiting their options for further changes to their business plan. So just so the council gets a clear line from us.
Dunkin' Donuts.
That's why we want to make sure.
Right, because it's an easy thing to think, but the reality is not true.
That good for you, Tom?
That's fine.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? And you get, Bert, are you writing all these things down?
Yeah, we'll probably glean from all of the deliberation for that.
Do we want to bring it back in a final vote next month, so we can all see all the stipulations? No? You guys are good?
No, I think-
Everybody comfortable?
Sure.
Good, okay.
We'll, we'll make sure we take everything that was in the-
Right.
-motion, and then, I guess, I was concerned-
It's the reason.
-because then Jake brought it back up.
Functional obsolescence to the property.
Yes.
So I think it's all in there, yeah.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand, say aye. Motion carries six to nothing. You got one more shot, though. Make sure you're there.
And your attitude before the city council is, we don't want you to reconsider this.
Good luck, good luck.
Thank you. We've got three more items. Do we want to take a break, or do we want to keep going?
Push through.
Oh, okay. Let's take a, take a seven-minute break, 3:30? We've got three more left. Three, three thirty.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mel. Called me back to order?
Yeah, contact you. Do one on, oh, I was looking at one on like 4,700 block in University.
Did you help Southeast 14th and 15th? Because I know there's one coming there.
Mel, is that Bert?
Yeah. He has a whole team.
Okay, item 11 is a conditional use permit at 333 East Grand.
Item number 11 is a request for a conditional use permit to allow a business to sell beer and wine. The business is operating as a limited retail sales establishment, under 12,000 square feet in area. The subject property is within the East Village Lofts building at the southwest corner of East Grand Avenue and East Fourth Street. There are apartments on the upper levels, the first two floors are live-work units. The subject property is Loft 106 within this building. It's fronting East Fourth Street. It's the business that's named Off in a Zone World. They've requested the conditional use permit to allow them to sell wine and beer in addition to their existing retail sales. Here's a photo of the building. This is the storefront for this business. You can see the first and second floors are live-work units where there's the retail on the ground level, and then the ability for the business operator to live in a loft on the second floor. Exhibit D is a packet of photos submitted by the applicant that shows the existing Retail, mix of gifts, other goods, jewelry. Exhibit F is the consent map. We have one card come back in support, one in opposition. I did talk to the East Village Neighborhood Association, they're not going to take a position on this item. Since this is in the downtown zoning districts, one of the C3 districts, it is not subject to the separation requirements that, in effect, for other places in the city, so they are only subject to the conditional use permit criteria. As noted in the staff report, those criteria include providing adequate separation from any residential use. In this instance, we don't feel that it is adequately separated from residential uses. There are people living nearby in possibly in the units on both sides, as well as in apartments on the upper levels of the building, so we don't feel that the health, safety, and welfare of the surrounding people is, are being adequately protected. And we also are concerned that selling prepackaged beer and wine to-go for off-premise consumption does not blend well with the pedestrian nature of the East Village neighborhood, which includes a mix of other taverns in other places in the neighborhood where alcohol is concerned, or is consumed. So we've recommended denial of the request of conditional use permit. Any questions?
Yes, if this... Yes, if this were a bar asking for a liquor license, would you have any hesitation in granting it?
I think we would have taken a closer look at it, given the fact there are dwelling units that close on both sides and above. I'm not sure that we would have recommended approval of it. You're right, we would look at it differently since the alcohol would be consumed there in the premises, so not taken outside in packages for consumption, who knows?
Well, most bars have, you know, you can buy packages there. I mean, can't buy bottles, but you can buy beer, take it out, and wine.
Right. We didn't, that wasn't the application, so that's not what we considered, so.
Any other questions? Thanks, Bert. Applicant, represent the applicant?
My name is Greg Chamberlain. Before you tell me, I have to tell you my name. And I represent the business Off in a Zone World, which is two blocks over here, and he does, he doesn't exactly understand the intent of the request clearly. We don't want to sell beer. We do not want to sell beer. You think we do, but we do not want to sell beer. We want to sell wine only. And I brought an example of just two of our products. We sell homemade wine stoppers made in Iowa, and we sell wine gift bags. All we're asking for is the ability to sell a bottle of wine to give as a gift with the gift bag and the wine stopper. We, we have no intention of becoming a liquor store. We are a fair trades, and if I could please refer to my notes here, we are a fair trade and global gifts business, meaning that the trades are bought from artists in third-world countries to support them. We sell fair trade coffee, we sell fair trade chocolates. All of our, 95% of our gifts are fair trade, 5% of our market, of our gifts are local goods. The wine is intended to be a local good. It is from one or maybe two local wineries. We intend on having one square foot of floor space dedicated to wine and no more. So I just want to be sure it's clear what it is, what we're really asking for here. We do not, in any shape or form, want to be caused for a disturbance. We don't want to be a place where people come and buy beer. In addition to that, I work at one of those seven taverns and have for 11 years, so I'm quite aware of the taverns. I've worked at the saddle over there for 11 years. And I have, I'm also a member of the historic East Village. I do have the support of the historic East Village. I also have the support of all seven of those taverns because I patronize all seven of them myself. So I just, I just...
You're out a lot.
Yeah. I'm very dedicated to the East Village right here.
Great expense account.
And as much as this East Village needs a grocery store or a convenience store really badly, I don't want to be it. I don't want to be the one to open one up. So that is not my intent here. I do want to point out two things. I mean, I mentioned the seven taverns and how I work in one. They sell very, very, very low-end wine in those establishments. I intend on selling high-end wine. You're going to be able to buy the wine cheaper at the bar than in my gift shop. So it's not going to be the kind of situation where people come in to buy wine to get drunk. And it's not going to be, we don't sell corkscrews, we don't sell bottle openers. The intent is not that you're going to take it out of our door and drink it. That is, and matter of fact, if we ever did decide to add beers, they'd be extremely high-end beers, and they would be very expensive. So I just don't see that turning into this convenience store atmosphere that's going to degenerate the neighborhood. Now, if I could get on to the, one of the last points that I have to make, possibly the last point, and that is the pedestrian nature of the area. I highly doubt whether selling a bottle of wine is going to affect the pedestrian nature of the area any more than Zombie Burger catty corner from us, which is very loud at night, or the business next door to us that sells marijuana pipes. I just don't see...
Glad you finished that.
I just don't see selling an occasional bottle of wine as a disturbance to the pedestrian nature of the area. So I highly would like to argue that statement very much. So I mean, in, 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 I don't want to prolong this anymore. You guys have been through a long day. This, my issue seems rather small compared to a lot of these other issues. I mean, I simply want to say, I am a member of the East Village, and I support it, and any, that, my business relies on that pedestrian activity. I'm the kind of business that people stop by and buy gifts for their mother, or their daughter, or their husband, or wife. And to lose that pedestrian nature would be the death of my business. So I would rather get rid of the wine than lose the pedestrian nature of that neighborhood. So I totally support the pedestrian nature of the neighborhood. That's about, I don't really have any more exhibits. I think you guys have seen enough in the pictures here. You can see all of the merchandise that they have in the store. It's clearly not wine.
We do have a couple of questions.
Excuse me, I have a question.
You betcha.
Yeah. It's not your intent, then, to serve wine on the premises, or it is your intent to serve?
It is not our intent to serve wine on the premises.
So basically, what you're trying to do is have a limited sale of wine products only, okay? So if we cut down on the conditional use permit, so that you would be limited to wine products and your display area would be more than, or no more than...
We put down three square feet, is what we put down on the zoning application. We're probably only going to use one square foot.
Well, why don't we give you 30 square feet of floor space for storage, you know? Because you're going to, I would guess you're going to have at least eight different cases of wine.
They're probably not going to be out on the floor.
Okay.
They're probably going to be in the back. There again, we're, it's such a small shop, we can't afford to give up more than a foot of floor space to it.
Alright.
But I mean, that's why I put down three. If we ever went to a three-foot wide display, that'd be it. That would be the most we'd need.
Mel?
Greg, how, how long has the business been operating there?
That's a...
In, in general, I mean?
In general, since the building went in...
Was it when the building opened?
It was Wander This World. We've owned it for two months.
Two months.
And two months, and we've changed it to Off in a Zone World.
Okay. But same general kind of merchandise?
Exact, same general merchandise. The only thing, we're trying to clean up and bring in more appealing stuff.
Sure. And what are the general hours of operation?
Oh, that's, oh, thank you. Thank you for asking that. 7:00 PM is when we close.
Okay.
I mean, I think most negative activity happens after 7:00 PM.
And really, if we get down to it, you're not selling this wine to make a bunch of money, you're selling the wine so then you can sell the other stuff that goes with it.
You got it.
Okay.
You got it. Yeah.
Very well illustrated. I'm assuming there's a bigger markup on the other stuff than there is on the wine.
Right, yeah, and that, that's a good point. We might make a dollar on the bottle of wine, but we are all going to make $2 maybe on the bag.
Right.
So you got it.
Okay.
You're correct.
Any other questions?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bert.
Anybody else here to speak in support? Is there anybody here to speak in opposition? Do we have any last questions for staff? You're in number, close the public portion, go to board decision.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to go on as a point of information. I own the building to the north of this in the, in the circle, but in speaking with council, it's on a conflict.
Thank you.
But just so it's on the record.
Good.
Even though I called the aforementioned Zombie Burger noisy.
Jake, well noted, thank you.
Well, Mr. Chair, staff made a nice presentation. I appreciate staff's recommendation, but considering this will be a conditional use permit, and if there's any problems, if they get too crazy, we could come in and yank the thing, I think I'd like to support the request for the conditional use permit.
Do you want to limit it to just wine and not allow beer and alcohol?
I'm happy to limit it to just wine because I don't know, you talked about local...
Because it's conditional use, you know, it could go on to the next donor, that's reasonable.
I'm, I'm happy to do that if, I'd like to know if the appellate has any problem with that.
I don't. I guess I could come before you again if we ever decide to add beer.
Exactly.
Wine is all...
Or Templeton rye.
No.
Okay. Darn, okay.
Okay.
So...
Are you going to limit it to one square foot?
I'd give them four square foot. They, they could have a two-by-two rack.
What he wants, as long as you got it within a range.
I would appreciate that ability to work within that gap.
Four square foot of...
The reason we ask for four square foot.
Four square foot, you got a two-by-two wine rack.
There you go.
That does add up, doesn't it, Jake?
Okay. Any other conditions you want to throw on that?
No, no, it would be limited to wine, four square feet of...
Display.
Display area.
Do I hear a second? Okay, been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Those in favor, raise your hands, say aye. Motion carries six to nothing. Kind of one of the express ones today, so hope you enjoy it.
I, I agree with you.
Item 12 is a variance at 3312 Granger.
Mr. Chair, the subject property is generally north of, if you know the Copart, Connecticut salvage yard, we call it a salvage yard, it's really like an insurance, storage for junk vehicles. The East Granger splits off of Vandalia here to the east and comes to a dead end at the lime production facility, and then ADM is directly to the west. Southwest is the Waste Water Reclamation Authority's main treatment plant, and then areas to the north are a salvage yard, and then the river, edge of the river basin, and the sand and gravel operations over here to the northeast. When you look at this site from Granger, it's, Granger's a semi-improved street. This is a fenced-in area, you really don't see much of the site from, from the public side of things. They have some limited facilities there right now. They're looking for an expansion, which would include, I think they're looking to do a facility which will do more precast wall products, and so this is, their proposal is to spend $2.5 million to put that facility in. I tried to take a shot, make sure that we look at that area. Again, it's hard to see into the site from the public side of things. They did provide a nice aerial photo schematic of what they want to do here. I'll have Bert zoom out. And so you can sort of see what they want to do versus what's already going on there. So you have all this area. Over the years, they've used a crushed rock material to sort of keep the surfaces covered and durable, and of course, that isn't something that we really allow. So rather than go back and try to determine whether they have any non-conforming rights and so forth, the fact that they're proposing this expansion, we... the fact that they're proposing this expansion, we will work to get this. It's enough of a dollar amount that it kicks in full compliance under our site plan regulations, which means pavement of all their surfaces for maneuvering. You can see some of these prominent areas where they maneuver more frequently. Their system for storage of their products is on concrete platforms. So by letter of the code, they are actually storing on a paved surface. And then, and you can maybe see that in the photos, how they were doing that a little bit. Maybe not. But basically, they have these lineal platforms that they set their products on so they are kept off of the ground and so that it doesn't generate a dust problem. So one of the positive things about what's been going on there is they, they are conforming to that. With this, they're also looking at expanding, have another office building and then an employee parking area. And then they're, they're showing some intent to pave areas coming in to prevent the dust, which is the main reason and the intent for requiring pavement of maneuvering and drive aisles. But staff's point, we looked at about twenty-two hundred lineal feet to really cover these areas that are prominently used as regular maneuvering to get those paved. Our engineer estimated based upon two-hundred, twenty-two hundred lineal feet at twenty-four feet wide with nine to ten inches of pavement thicknesses. I think it resulted in about six thousand cubic yards of concrete. And it was more like about three-hundred-and-sixty thousand that would be added on. Now, I spoke a little bit with the engineer for the appellate here. And their standard may be a little higher for what they were, if they're going to do something, they want to do it right and include wider drive aisles and things of that nature. So the number that they presented at adding two million to the overall project cost, probably was a little more of a Cadillac compared to what we would require. So I just want to point that out. We didn't have any discussion about compromising some phasing or anything of that nature. There's no request here for temporary waiver. So I think all those things are sort of in between what they're asking for and the fact that we're recommending denial of the, of the request. The use that they're engaged in is a permitted use, so it's not a question of whether they can do this here or not. They have the correct zoning. They just need to follow the, the standards for the, for the use, which they're wanting to waive that or have a variance to that at this time. Staff doesn't believe that they can achieve a good, a good amount of it for sure as a reasonable percentage of their total expansion costs. So that's where we, that's where we sit right now.
Questions? Yeah. There is a sand and gravel operation to the northeast. Is that correct? A mining operation for sand and gravel?
Yes.
Now, wouldn't that generate a whole lot more dust than anything you could possibly feature coming from this site?
It does. I mean, there's a number, this area was actually very problematic at one point in time. And efforts of the city to put surfaces on, you know, unpaved streets and a number, a number of other things has resulted in getting that air particulate down. But moving forward, when we expand projects and do new projects, we don't want to go backwards, I guess. So the intent of the ordinance is to get compliance over time when we do investments. So, but you're right, there's a number of existing dust generators in the area for sure, yeah.
I have one question, Eric. When, uh, when did the, when did it change? In the timeline of this business being there, when, when did it go into effect that this additional paving is required?
You know, these standards, I do, do know, changed in early two thousands. But there was, there's been some level of requirement for driveways to be paved since the seventies at least. So now, they looked at storage yards a little differently. And I know those stand, those standards for storage yards and things have been tweaked around over time. So I don't know if we have a good record of who's, you know, been in compliance all along, who hasn't since we operate on a complaint basis, you know? You know, there's no, there's no recorded history of enforcement for this business in terms of violating any provisions. So that's again why I haven't gotten too much into whether we should go back and retroactively determine, do they need to have this relief for the past or not? So right now, the fact that they're making this level of investment triggers full compliance under the site plan. And so we have the means to require it at this point for sure.
Eric, do you have another picture? Can I look? I'm trying to figure out where exactly this is. And I think I know. I don't think there's too much around it.
Well, when, like, when you look at the area.
There, okay.
So this is ADM. Southeast thirtieth is not very far to the west here. Cargill, I'm sorry. ADM's on the north side.
Is that the old, like, the Sunset Beach?
Yes.
Yeah, thirtieth and Vandalia is just over here, so that would take you up to the fairgrounds, straight north.
Sunset Beach, we used to go swimming.
This is, uh-
I think the DNR would approve of that.
I forget which owner this is of the salvage yard.
I know, I know, I know. That's how it got the name.
Lot of reminiscence back here.
Yeah.
And Pleasant Hill's not too far to the east.
Question for Eric.
Go ahead.
Is it question time? Are we doing questions?
This is kind of the end of the road. I mean, it doesn't go anywhere.
Yo, you're right. It's, it is the end of the road. This is literally the end of the road right there, so.
Mel?
Eric, the, um, the city's engineering staff estimates up to twenty-two hundred lineal feet of concrete at the width of twenty-four feet. So it sounds like what they're saying is, well, that'd really just be drive aisle maneuvering areas that are required to be, of what you're requiring, you're just requiring these drive aisles maneuvering areas to be paved.
Right. Where the routine and normal heavy traffic is occurring is where-
Circulation kind of what occurs. Drives in, drives out, and the loop or whatever.
And other areas, we need a dustless surface, which is more like a recycled asphalt product to keep-
Okay.
And, and so there's some amount of that that we would expect on areas where they're setting, storing vehicles or things related to this.
So is there two million plus estimate based on just your twenty-two hundred lineal feet? Or are you really talking apples to apples?
I think you better talk to their engineer, because I think they had a higher, you know, they might have been doing reinforced twelve-inch thick, you know, forty-foot wide paths. I don't know.
Okay, okay. And, and we can ask them that too. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thanks, Eric. Applicent or representative applicant?
My name's Adam Peterson, and I'm the owner of the property on thirty-three, one, two, East Grainger in Des Moines, Iowa. Give you a little bit of background of the company. Company, actually, this, this facility used to be operated by a company called IPC Incorporated here locally. And IPC was owned by a company called Creexex out of Minnesota. And we, we operated five facilities. I say we, because I was the general manager for IPC for about five years. And IPC in all sense, closed. They rolled one of their facilities in Isle Falls under another sister company. In fact, they're going to more of a seasonal shutdown type facility. The other three facilities have been closed permanently. This is the fifth facility. I led a group of three other managers and, and acquired assets from IPC or from Creexex in order to start a new company called PDM Precast. And that started the end of March of this year. So at the time, there were twenty-two employees at this facility. We're now up to thirty-seven employees. And our intent is to stay at that level, not be seasonal, be a full-time operation. Things have gone very well. And we've, we've gone from, you know, IPC's business plan was a failure due to the economy and its, and its general size. It just wasn't right-sized. We are now right-sized. We had a successful year and some of the long-term improvements that we wanted to do that IPC just never prioritized. They treated the company, Creexex treated the company more as a cash cow. We're a young group, not an independently wealthy group, mind you. But we, we want to reinvest what we make back into the company to create even a more, a more stable company for the future. Eric's, Eric uses the word expansion. It's, it's not really an expansion, actually. We, we pour concrete outside, as you can imagine, you know? That's, that's not conducive when it rains, it's not conducive when it's really windy, and it's not conducive when it's really cold outside. So what we're trying to do is, this, let's see if I can do this without making mockery myself. There are actually two, we, we pour a lot of wall panels. A lot of your big distribution center projects that you've seen over the last year, in Ankeny, the Torps Distribution Center, the big building for John Deere, we did both of those buildings. We, we've poured on these wall panel beds all, all summer long. Well, we, we enjoy the drought. Bad for the farmers, bad for your lawn, good for us. Well, quite frankly, that's luck, and I'm not a big fan of luck. So we want to build a building over our big wall panel production lines in order to control weather. Go from two-hundred production days to two-hundred-and-fifty production days in a year. Go from working Saturdays to make up for a lost day, to just working our regular work shift. So we're actually not looking to increase our revenue, it's just to stabilize it and to control it and take the luck factor out, factor out of it. The other part of the two and a half million is, we have a, we have a deplorable. I mean, this, this facility's been in operation since the seventies. It's been treated like a cash cow for the last twenty-five years. No real money has gone back into this business. The, the employee building, it, it's, it's, it's a train wreck. Really bad antiquated, a little trailer they use for locker room, really ratty restrooms. So we're spending, over two and a half million, we're spending about three-hundred-thousand dollars to build a new employee building to help improve the facilities for the employees. We're also building a warehouse over here to store some of our materials under roof. Again, not really expansion activity, just really trying to control the environment better. As a result, you know, long-term future, we do plan, we, we, we dumped a lot of information on Eric and his peers lap. This office building and then the associated parking lot, this is something that'll happen in the future. I would say five to six years from now. We recognize that when we put an office building out here, we're going to have to increase our paving for that use. So, so that, that, that we recognize. But going back to the particular subject of, of paving and what we're asking a variance for, we're, we're, we're all for putting a paved surface up to the production building, mainly for, for emergency vehicle use. I think that's something that's, you know, important for those folks. This is very stable ground, but we understand why that would be a need. We're okay with establishing a permanent entrance where right now it's just a gravel entrance. I, I think we understand. That seems practical to us. Here's where there's this two-million-dollar versus half-million-dollar disconnect. Our products typically stored in this area, a little bit in this area, ultimately gets loaded onto a trailer and then pulled out of the facility with, with a tractor. But before, before you get onto a trailer traffic, which really flows through here, that's where you would talk about a twenty-four-foot wide lane. We handle our product with forty-two-foot wide, fifty-two, fifty-foot wide massive mobile cranes. So when you really talk about, if, if, if we're to require paved surfaces for all of our mobile equipment, you're talking about much larger areas than just a twenty-four-foot long, or twenty-four-foot wide paved surface. So for us, putting in, even if, even if Eric's team was okay with us doing some more moderate roads to, to meet the requirements, it's not useful to us. I mean, it, it, it wouldn't make any sense to us to do that. If we're going to do it, we're going to do the wider path. We're going to do it in the areas that are, are literally being traveled on. And it's a little bit more unfortunately than, than, than half-a-million dollars. It's something that we're interested in doing long-term. It's just, it would put, the two and a half million dollars is kind of a magical number for us. These are, these are three buildings that are very important to stabilizing the business plan. To add another, even if it's a half-a-million dollars per the engineer estimate, we figure out some, we just spend a half-a-million dollars of it to get further down the path. That extra half-a-million dollars would be a big deal to us. And it would probably force us to scale back on the buildings that we're, we're looking to do. We would then prioritize things. What do we want to, what, 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 what aren't we going to do to, to replace that? And again, given the location, you guys kind of hit on it, this is not the glamorous part of Des Moines. I mean, the lime plant on one side, the wastewater treatment plant across the street, cargo on one side and salvage yards on either side. We want to do right by this area. We want to continue to improve this property. We just want to do it in a practical way. And if, if for whatever reason, Eric kind of alluded to it, if for whatever reason, there is going to be some fixed requirement, we then will ask in response for there to be a timeframe associated with that, where we're making some long-term commitment over time to pave. That's something we would be open to, because quite frankly, that helps us. You know, we do, we do some repair, you know? When you're moving big mobile equipment, when you get a soft spot in the ground, even though this is an old facility, we don't get a lot of soft spots. But when we do, we've got to repair that. That costs us money. Paving areas actually makes some fiscal sense to us over the long term. We just want to be able to do it as we have the financial means to do it. So anyway, that's me, and I don't know, Keel, if, if we want to get into more tech, I brought my, my civil engineer with me as well. So if we want to get into more technical conversations, then Keel can be available.
Two kind of questions we've got. Mel?
Well, there's, we, we always have discussion about dustless surfaces, where sometimes, you know, if the city engineer approves it, you can use something else, like maybe crushed up asphalt or something like that.
Yep.
Do you have access to that? Would somebody provide that to you, or is it cheaper to get?
We'll tear through that, Mel. I mean, that's the reality, is the, the type of equipment that we use, it, it needs to be a durable surface. We wouldn't, if we're going to do something that is going to be permanent or close to permanent.
Yeah.
We're talking about a ten-inch reinforced section of, of, of concrete over, over the, the stone that we have is fairly stable. We cleaned it up a little bit before we paved on top of it. But no, you know, we do, we do do some things to control the dust for our own sake. You know, we have our own requirements for our workers to make sure that we're creating a controlled dust environment. So we do different, uh, things that we spray on top. We have used asphalt grindings over time to help keep the dust down in critical areas. Because like I said, we do that just for our own environment, for our employees.
Right.
But to say that we're going to do some light paving in some areas and hope that it's going to do anything over time, it just won't.
Well, what, what, what I'm really after here, and I, I hope I'm on your wavelength here, is if you did some paving in certain areas like you're showing, but in some other maneuvering areas, if we said, use the, use the ground and crushed asphalt for some maneuvering. If you're already just using crushed concrete, is there a difference between using that and the crushed asphalt?
Crushed, uh-
Or does the asphalt give way or break down?
It, it does, you know?
Okay, that's a clarification I need.
In my opinion, it doesn't create the dustless environment that's the intent.
Okay, it still creates some dust.
It'll get mixed in with everything else. And, and again, we could, we could use that material, but it won't, in my opinion, it won't solve the problem.
So what you're saying, it won't perform better as a non-hardened material than what you're doing now?
Not my opinion.
Okay, all right.
Kind of like, yeah, throwing a bucket of water on a horse fire.
And of the paving, you are showing like, you know, the improved drive and the paving up to the new wall panel covered production facility. Is that part of your two-million-dollar estimate?
Two and a half million dollars.
Or the two and a half million dollars?
Exactly. The, the additional two-million dollars that we're trying to avoid would be above and beyond that amount.
All right, so that's a half-million there.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We're prepared to do that amount of paving, which would be some portion of what Eric's requirements, recommendations would be.
Okay.
We're hoping that's enough, until we do the office building. And then of course, we want to come in and talk about-
And are you talking about paving this parking area up front? I see the stalls here. Is that something you want to do now?
No, that's part of the future.
No, that's part of the expansion down the road.
Yes, sir. So that'd be five years from now when we talk about it.
So where do the employees park now with their personal cars? Is it that same general area? It's just not paved?
You know, there are, there's some parking there, but actually alongside-
Okay.
Here, there's a lot of parking here. That is actually, we have a different drawing that could show what's existing paved.
Okay.
You know, this aerial kind of makes everything look like it's, it's, it's gravel. Quite frankly, a lot of it is gravel. But I'd say there's still decent amount of paved surfaces that we use for some parking, but primarily for material handling and storage.
Okay.
We do a lot of wood, foam, things that go into our products that we store. That's part of what the warehouse is, is right now, there's a big paved section right here.
Okay.
And what we're trying to do is take it one step further and put it under roof.
All right.
With that space.
And if I drove down Grainger Avenue just on a Sunday drive, if I drove by your place, do you have much for like green space out front, any trees? Or is pretty much just the fence and there's kind of a-
I mean, there are trees there, but I would call them ratty trees. You know, you're talking about weed-style trees.
Okay.
And you got some green along the northern end of the pond.
But as far as on your frontage, you just got your security fence and then the roadside.
Security fence and, and, and a ditch with some weeds.
Okay. All right.
What do you use that pond for?
Uh, we don't, we use that pond basically for, for retention. Now, we also have two wells that draw from that pond. We're currently on, on well water. And that's actually one of the part, part of our two and a half million dollar improvement is actually to bring city water on there, use of our boiler. Right now, the boiler runs off well water, and if you guys know anything about boilers, that's bad news for boilers.
Yes.
So we're, we're trying to improve that. There'll be city water now available to the employee building, which, you know, up till now, it's been pumped off well. I mean, it's, it's, it's a tough environment, and it's a reason why IPC had a hard time with- with keeping a consistent workforce. This is, this is gonna go a long ways in helping us with that.
Wow, cool.
So you're not planning on planting wild rice around the pond and...
No, sir.
Having a little duck hunting and...
No, no, sir, although my civil engineer mentioned that he saw a deer blind up there in the tree. You're welcome to come out for that, but, uh...
They have a permit for bow hunting, I'm sure.
I'm sure whoever put it there does.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thanks.
Is there anybody else here to speak in support? Is there anybody here to speak in opposition? Last questions for staff? Hearing done, we'll close the public motion, go to board decision. Good plan.
I think it'd be fun to take a tour and see them pour a wall. Well, it sounds like they're trying. I understand what staff likes, and I, I like to see that on heavily traveled areas where you got lots of trucks coming in and out, where you're gonna have dust blowing around, and where you have other uses nearby that have complied. Like, I didn't like the RV guy with his non-paved lot, and then, you know, next to him we have paved lots. It sounds like a step in the right direction if they do more expansion down the road, pave a parking lot, pave where the employees park. I'm not opposed to what I'm seeing here on the site plan.
I'm not either, and usually, usually I would be. And I know that city's recommending denial of it, but if my fellow board members would agree to it, I, I would be fine with it. It just literally is, I mean, nobody goes there. It's just, I, I drive down East 30th to Marietta, and I always think, okay, now what happens if I go down there?
Don't.
You know, I just disappear, or what?
A big crane will run you over.
So I, I mean, there's no, it's not by anything, nobody goes down there. It's, I don't think anybody's gonna be in that.
I think the plan they've laid out with the kind of money that they have available makes more sense over time. I think it's gonna be a better laid-out plan, it's gonna look a lot better, rather than saying, okay, you gotta do this all right now. Well, saying, well, like you say, let's cut back on this building, let's cut back on that building, and I think we're defeating the purpose.
Well, and, and it sounds like they're trying to make the business work for not just to make money, but to make it better for everybody, including employees. So I think if it would make sense for them to pave it, you know, regardless of the intent of the ordinance, if it makes sense for them to pave it, they will pave it. So...
It's appropriate zoning, it's appropriate location. This is not a liquor store next to a church. This is, this is what this land is designed, is what it's for.
I think we're getting the right direction. Could I get a motion?
Um, I'd just like to clarify, this is your site plan, and this is what you would intend to do, correct?
What we're looking at right here.
Yeah.
That's correct, this is...
Minus the proposed employee parking area, so...
Exactly right.
So, so the two entrances, yeah, the two west entrances?
This part right here would be part of a future phase, not a part of today's work. This, this existing entrance would be extended. And then this new, basically, we're actually going to vacate. I can't remember, Caleb, is this the existing one? Okay, so this is the existing entrance that we will now pave, and then this will be a new entrance that we will establish and take all the way to the production building.
Okay.
A lot of that has to do with, the reason for two entrances is to, is to take that step for the future expansions, that way there's a little separation of church and state there. So that way, as you got office employees, they're avoiding the actual truck traffic.
And this is a, this is a scaled site plan with reliable dimensions, correct?
Yes.
Question for, uh, staff. Eric, they do phase two, we get to see it again, right?
Say that again.
They pulled the trigger on phase two or any, any component of that? Is it reasonable to think it's substantive enough that we see it again?
Yeah, I mean, right now, I, I would assume we would proceed with a bu, an office building and that amount of parking shown without any kind of trip back to the...
Oh, that's fine, yeah, and deviate from that, sure.
If it's substantially different, then we'd come back if they needed to, you know, if they decided they wanted their, uh, office in another part of the site and it was twice as big and needed twice as much parking, you know, then... But I think is, if they're staying within substantial compliance of their site sketch, you could make that a condition of any approval.
I'm fine with what that is.
And Eric, with what they're showing, the two new drive approaches or entrances here, would that trigger any requirements for landscaping or anything?
Well, the, the, what's gonna trigger landscaping is the building itself. The expansion of the, the amount of, uh, dollar investment to the site is actually triggering all the aspects, so they're still gonna be required to meet their, their site plan requirements under landscaping, so...
And we, and we haven't really debated that, nor are they really asking for an appeal on that.
Yeah, they can ask for waiver of those things through the administrative process.
All right, okay.
If there's...
Okay, I mean, you know, it wouldn't hurt if they want to throw a few trees in and dress up the ditch or something.
We're gonna, at this point, we're gonna require it.
Yeah, okay, okay, it's just, just not shown.
You know, if they need to waive some of those things, that'll be another process.
Right, okay, all right.
Okay. Do we hear a motion?
Uh, I'd make a motion to approve the variances, kind of, I guess I would say the variances requested. However, the applicant shall install paving for the width and length, as noted on the site plan, for the two western entrances or approaches in substantial conformance with the dimensions shown.
I'm getting a nod back there, looks good.
Okay.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, moved to second, is there any further discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand, say aye. Motion carries six to nothing. We'll be taking a drive-by Granger, wanna see what it looks like. Good job, guys. Last one is...
Let us know when the duck hunting opens.
That's right. I did, fool, you bet. Sunset Beach.
I was a clear-water beach.
Yeah. Item 13 is a special permit at 6111 Forest.
Uh, this is in the Merle Hay neighborhood area. Western edge of the city, close to the western edge, I should say. Wanna make sure I have the pictures here. The appellant, uh, is currently operating a business, and so this came to us on complaint basis. I think the real issue here, the, the owner of the home, occupant of the home, is operating an office essentially for a chimney, uh, cleaning business. They obviously aren't working on-site, but other people are employed as part of this business, do come to the site, and vehicles are parked in the vicinity of the site, if not on the site. And so the immediate neighbors have a issue with the appearance of it being a business, which it is, uh, but it, it also displays the presence of a business within a residential neighborhood setting. So those, you'll see a couple cards from the immediate adjoining neighbors that are, uh, expressing that concern, basically. You can see that there's a couple of vans and a truck. Two of them have the trade, uh, name and advertising for the business. A couple others don't look any different than any other personal, uh, type of vehicle. So, uh, there, there was the presence of those on-site. The bus, otherwise, you know, from that standpoint, as long as they're following the provisions that we would allow for any home occupation, keeping within half of the, uh, floor area of, of the main floor or any accessory building, um, keeping all materials and equipment other than the, the vehicle's license for the road inside of the buildings. Um, you know, the staff doesn't see any real concern with allowing this business, as long as they kind of keep away from that image of storing a lot of equipment outside and the things that the neighbors really have a problem with. I guess, if you look at this, you can have two additional, uh, people from, uh, not living on the premises can be part of this under the provisions for any home occupation. If you want to limit that down, it, you know, that might be something reasonable for the board to consider if there's, uh, this sense that there's a lot of people parking or parking business vehicles at the location. Otherwise, I would, uh, go with the staff recommendation here, which is to approve the request subject to these limitations. And a couple of them are really just restating what's already required, which is no outdoor storage of equipment related to the business. And again, storage of, you know, of their equipment. I don't know, I don't even know what they use to sweep chimneys, but, uh, I always have visions of Mary Poppins when I'm thinking of this. I'm not trying to be, uh, stereotypical or anything, but that's what I think of. Any related equipment, uh, except for the actual pickup trucks and vans, it must be stored inside a building, limited no more than half of an accessory structure. So again, that's already a requirement, we're just reinforcing that with these conditions. I'll show you the consent map. As you can see, the two cards that are most concerned are the immediately adjoining neighbors, so, uh, obviously the most impacted by the situation.
I have a question. If I have a business and I have six employees, and the employees all come and park their cars all up and down the street, and then buddy up and take off with my business van, do those personal vans, those, they can't do that, can they? Or are you saying...
I mean, that might be considered an activity which presents this problem for the neighborhood if you're looking at special permits. I don't think there's any, as long as they're parking in a legal location and they're not conducting their business throughout the day on premises, I don't know what we would actually have to, to go after that.
I mean, because...
If, I mean, your concern is they're basically dispatching business from this location and that there's a lot of frequenting, and this came up with a plumbing business on the east side, yeah.
I know it's come up at a roofing company that...
And so certainly, I think if you feel like there's conditions that would control that activity, uh, you would want to make those, um...
I just don't think it looks, I, as a neighbor, I don't really want to be around...
Cars sitting around all day.
Parking, you know, lined up trucks in, on my street when, when it's people that are coming to work and then leaving. So when you talk about, you know, that they can use, they can use trucks and vans that are used for personal use, but does that only reply, apply to the owner, the occupants of the home, or does that apply to...
I think we're definitely the ones that are associated with the business. I think somebody's private vehicle is gonna be hard for us to enforce or track. Again, if they're parking legally on the street as if any other citizen with their licensed vehicle, I don't know how we can really...
Okay, but Eric...
Wasn't, wasn't there something about, for a home occupation, it could only be the people that live there and maybe one other person?
No, it's two. Yeah, that's what I mentioned before. So if you go to those applicable requirements, right, two can be employed on premises.
Okay.
Again, the question is, are they, if they're just dropping, picking up a slip and leaving, you know, I don't, uh, that's a, that's a very gray line, I guess. That's why we have that provision that allows it to be brought to you if it's really an issue for the neighborhood. But I think that's a reasonable thing for you folks to be considering here, is is that what's going on? The same thing with the martial arts studio, you know, you had students coming for several hours for the day, and so if that activity is, is creating problems for the neighbors, it's certainly something you can look...
We had a hair salon that way, too.
Making, making conditions to try to mitigate those things. But I don't know about, there's anything that we can just say no, you know, from where Sue and I sit. You know, it seems to fit within the, the home occupation intent. The question is, is there an, an amount of activity that's sort of abnormal or different from a lot of home occupation?
Then if it creates a problem for the neighborhood, then that's something...
Right, which it's sounding like it is, and that's why we're sort of reinforcing that provision, so that the expectation is that, you know, you're not stringing your things out in the yard and parking your vehicles around, uh, you know, keeping everything under, under a roof.
But I don't see anything about employees' trucks.
Parked on...
Right, right, that wasn't anything that we mentioned, no. Because in, I guess in my view, I couldn't tell an employee's personal vehicle parked a block down the street from anybody else's parked down the street, so... Now, what, does that create a problem because they're not normally introduced to that area? Yes.
This is an R1 neighborhood, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Let me, I, I'm seeking, Eric, a clarification of your second requirement. Any equipment related to the business to be kept on the premises except for pickup trucks or vans used alternatively for personal use.
Right, that, that's saying that you can park those just like you can your other vehicles.
So if, instead of having their imprint on the outside of the truck, uh, they had no imprint on the outside of the truck and put magnetic signs on the truck every morning?
That would be, that would probably change the image of what's going on there, yeah.
Yeah, but that, that would be permitted, wouldn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's why, that's why we're saying except that, we're not saying those have to be inside.
Yeah, they, they don't have to put those inside a building.
No, that's not what we're suggesting. Um, but it sounds like the neighbors still have the, that's, my read of the neighbors' complaints is that is exactly the problem, but I don't know really what we can do, unless you want to say all vehicles associated with the business are placed in a building, you know, or parked in a building in off-hours or whatever, you know. That doesn't seem reasonable the, the way this board has acted in the past.
I think we even require somebody to find some different parking.
For their employees?
Yeah.
Right, and you, and maybe it's the total volume that's the issue, I don't know. So if, if, if it's the, you know, number of people that are being dispatched from this location is too heavy for the neighborhood, the board could certainly make that finding, you know.
Okay.
Be interesting to see what the applicant's got to say.
Yes, that'd probably be good.
Thanks, Eric. Applicent, representative of the applicant?
My name's Janie Rickard, and I own Alpine Chimney Suite. I understand that there's been a complaint, and the complaint, I think, was based, or happened because my dad passed away, and I brought a vehicle, Alpine Chimney Suite van from Omaha, to sell it, so that I didn't have to show it over there every time. But I have one chimney suite van, one pickup truck in my driveway, and then I, um, and that van is gone every day, and it comes home right now about nine o'clock at night. But not really, I get home a little sooner than that, but, um, I try and clean my, my home, my business, everything contained. I have one employee, he's there 20 hours a week. And, um, and that's, I try and comply, I went through every single thing and try and comply. My garage is too small to fit any vehicle. And so it's, it's just that type of neighborhood, it's a working-class neighborhood. As a matter of fact, if I wanted to park in my street right now, I can't because there is a abandoned truck, or I think it's abandoned. But I also want to point out, there's, there are three rentals. I'm, I'm surrounded by three rentals. And I think this also arose from, um, several years ago, I had some complaints, okay, about people driving on my lawn and parties and, and I think that's what, you know, when this van came in, and, which is gone, um, that's when the problem started. And, well, when that neighbor that I had the problem with got the letter. So, anyway, I don't know. Uh, I, I just try and keep everything clean. Um, I went to all the neighbors that lived there. Um, the tenant immediately next to me would have signed something, you know, that I'm a good neighbor, I keep things clean, and I said, that's probably not a good idea for you. I just didn't want them evicted. They're very nice people, we have good renters there now, let's keep them. So... So, I don't know what else.
Well, I think, one of the questions, as you're, as you're hearing down here, is, what, you say there's only one person that comes and parks on the street?
Mm-hmm.
Why is there the perception that there's multiple vehicles there?
Well, now, again, this neighbor called me, or when I called her to say, "What's going on?" You know, I thought, you know, I cleaned some chimneys for her and gave her special deals on this kind of thing, "What's going on here?" You know, and she said, "Well, there's a black truck in there right now," and I said, "Well, I, I do, I mean, you can look at the permits with the city. I improve my property. I have somebody laying a laminate floor in my basement right now." Okay, so that's, that's what that person was doing there. The other vehicle was my son's vehicle. I, I just, you know, so that's what's going on.
Okay, so, so Janie, if I understand your business plan, you clean chimneys yourself physically?
Yes, I love...
And, and your one assistant cleans chimneys with you? Or goes out and does a separate job? There's only two of you?
He's not certified, so he has to go with me.
All right, so there's only two of you doing chimney sweep work in your business?
Absolutely.
Okay, which means if he comes to report for work, he's probably going to park in the street or your driveway?
Mm-hmm.
And then you've got your chimney van and a, and a pickup yourself?
Yes.
Okay, do you have a sidewalk on your side of the street?
No.
Okay, so you don't block the sidewalk when you park?
I have a sidewalk, a handicap sidewalk...
I'm, I'm just saying, a sidewalk in front along the street, okay? Because a lot of people get upset when you cram too many cars in a driveway and block the sidewalk, the public sidewalk. But you're not doing that because you don't have a sidewalk on your side of the street?
No.
Okay.
Now, as a matter of fact, I mean, the neighbors, you know, I mean, they've, I've got kids over here, I've got kids over here, they're normally in my driveway playing basketball.
Okay.
Okay, so...
All right, that's fine.
The neighbors don't have a problem with me, and we're a blue-collar neighborhood.
And, and you don't store any vehicle on the street for more than a 24-hour period? It's, if you park something in the street, it's driven everywhere?
Or any vehicle on the street.
Okay, which is good, but if you have a relative's van that's not selling or something, you can't leave it sit on the street?
And I did not.
Okay, good, okay.
Let me ask you this. If you, if you, you've read the staff recommendation?
Yes, I did.
If you were granted, where would you keep your Alpine truck right now? Because this, the way I understand this, it says, "No..."
Can we go, let's see, this picture here, how I did it, a chimney sweep, no, a person...
It says that, you know, like a...
Yeah, there you go.
Okay, here we go.
Yeah.
So this van, you can, I don't even know if you can see it, but it has Omaha, the one in front of my pickup.
That's gone?
That is gone.
Okay, so the Alpine cleaning chimney sweep truck that you've got?
Mm-hmm.
If we were to grant a home occupation, that would still need to be outside, though, right?
I can't fit even my own personal...
Yep, yep, okay.
Okay.
It has to be, or...
That's what I wanted to know, because this says, "Except for pickup trucks or vans used alternatively for personal use." So if you had just a plain pickup truck that you use for work and, and personal use, that could be kept outside. But the way I read this, and we'll get city's clarification, but it looks to me like they're saying this van would need to be inside. Is that, is that what the rest of you are, maybe not even important right now?
And I, I drove around my neighborhood on, on that note, and there's, there's, what's the difference of a guy bringing home his, his, he works for a large company and bringing home his vehicle? You know, I mean, there's, there's vehicles all over my neighborhood. And that's just the kind of neighborhood it is.
Sure, but you've only got one marked corporate vehicle?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and that's all you're planning to have?
Yes, sir.
Unless you really grow and then you get a commercial location somewhere else?
I'm trying to make that decision now. Do I grow or do I just raise my prices? You know, it's one of the two, and, and...
Keep prices low and grow.
So, something like that.
Get more business.
Because I can't do it all, and...
Okay.
Any other questions? I'll do, thank you.
And I do have one of my neighbors here.
Ma'am, could I ask you a question? Have you read, have you read the staff recommendations?
Yes, I have.
And are they acceptable to you?
Yes, they are.
Thank you.
Good, okay. Is there anybody else here to speak in support?
Hi, everyone, I'm Roxanne Lynch. I live at 6100 Forest Avenue, right across the street from Janie. I've been there about 14 years, and she's operated the business the whole time I've been there. And it's interesting that this has come to light, because I've never once heard any issue or discussion or complaint of it, and she's an excellent neighbor, she keeps her property up really well. I enjoy having her there. So I was really surprised to learn this was an issue, because as I said, no one I've ever spoken to has discussed it, you know? So I don't see that there is any problem. I know in our neighborhood, we've got a few rental properties, as Janie mentioned, and I know right across the street from me is a rental owned by someone here, and there's a lot of cars parked, she has great renters now, but there have been issues in the past. So the only problems I see have been some of those things. So it's kind of interesting this is coming to pass, so. Any questions?
So your, your view of your neighbor's property is what we're seeing here? You said you live across the street?
Yes, I live just, right across the street from that.
Okay, so that's pretty much the view you've got, and you're okay with that?
I'm, yeah, I'm fine. I just, it isn't like that, it's usually just one truck, so...
Is parking allowed on one side or both sides of the street?
You know, I'm not sure. Yes, most of the time, it's on one side.
Okay.
But I, every now and then, someone parks on the other side, but then they come and get it pretty fast.
But you call the police for that?
No, I don't.
You should.
I don't. If they're gone, within a reason, I do, so...
All right, thank you.
But other than that, I, as I said, it's always been cleaned, it's business hours, there's never, she only has one assistant, so I don't see that as, as really being an issue in my mind, so.
Thank you.
Okay.
Anybody else here to speak in support? Anybody here to speak in opposition?
Hi, my name is Winnie Williams. I'm the owner of the house, can, I don't know how to use this.
Just lay it down on top of the other one there.
Sure. Could you go as a point to which house you own?
Okay, okay, it's this house right here.
Which is next door to the east.
Right, if you look at the large picture window in that house, the view from that window is of those trucks and pickup trucks, pickup trucks that come to deliver those service people that they own, and also their trucks that are in the street. Let's see, this picture, I'll go back to this, was taken on Sunday. Those trucks are there all day long on Sunday, which I find offensive. I'm the owner of the house, it is a rental, the tenants that are there have not made a complaint, they are very nice people, and they're willing to work with Janie Rickard, and I'm willing to work with her, too. I don't care that she has a business in her house, I care about the fact that this is the view. More often than not, she denies that, but it's true. If it's not two trucks, it's always one. This is a Sunday, she has no place to put them, apparently, I don't know that. The dispatching comes and goes, there are people working on the driveway. Last Thursday, here was a man working in the garage, and he's got a yellow shirt on, with power tools, cutting and making things that have to do with the business. When I read the report, it sounded like Janie was doing secretarial or office work in her house. That is not what I have seen over the last seven years, that, in fact, longer than that, that I've owned the house next door. What I've seen are workers coming and going, the business has been larger and then smaller, larger and then smaller, apparently, now it's smaller. But every time a worker comes, they park a pickup truck somewhere in the neighborhood or, or in the driveway, so that there are usually four cars in a, that's a, supposed to be a single driveway. If you look at the garage, it's not a double-sized garage, it's a single. But the cars have driven in double, so that they can squeeze in four cars. There's a little bit of a green spot between our houses, I guess that's on a different photo, but it's usually just a mud rut with tires in it, because the trucks drive on it all the time. So my request is, I would like to, at some point, maybe sell this house, and on a Sunday afternoon, if I had an open house, that's what people would see. And although she claims this is a blue-collar neighborhood, this is also a very nice neighborhood. This is right off of Cummins Parkway, it's, all the houses are lovely, they're all taken care of. My particular house is a darling little one-and-a-half-story, I have professional people living in it. The woman is a librarian at the West Des Moines Library, the gentleman is a mortgage broker with Wells Fargo. So I don't know that whether it's blue-collar or white-collar has anything to do with, with the problem, so. And I would like to maintain a good relationship with my neighbor. If she would like to keep her business there, that would be fine. I would like to not see out the living room windows of that house trucks. Thank you.
Quick question. Hey, Winnie?
Yes?
Since you spent all this time here. Now, in your photos, it showed two vans, and you, I couldn't quite see your date, but that was a recent photo.
Yes.
In the last week, have you seen two vans there?
Um...
Or was it like a month ago? Because according to Janie, she sold the one van, so...
This was on 10/7.
Okay.
This photo.
Okay, so that's been two weeks ago now?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You got three minutes for closing arguments, or...
So, this is, this is accurate, this guy right here.
Yeah.
That's accurate.
That's accurate, meaning what?
That's a daily view. That is a daily view, and the guy working, I would be glad to get, you know, notarized that he is working on a laminate floor.
So are you saying it's accurate there's a man standing in an open door every day, or?
No, not, I, you know, I would like to have him there every day, but I can't afford...
All right, but what you're saying is during the business day, there's maybe one vehicle, and everybody else is gone?
I'm in that vehicle, so I can't drive my truck.
Right.
So there's one truck in the driveway.
All right.
So if I'm driving my personal vehicle, it's gone. So one of those vehicles will be gone during the day.
And she showed two labeled company vans in the driveway. One of those is now gone permanent?
Correct.
So you only have one labeled vehicle?
Correct.
Okay.
And I think that's all I had, so I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay.
And the, the neighbor, well, and the view is, you know, of the street out of that window, and that kind of shows that, I mean, they, they look at the street, and, you know, out my window, I look at the street, you know, and, and so I try and keep it nice and neat, because that's the way I like it as well.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sure.
Can I make one more comment?
Nope, sorry, got to follow the rules. Any last questions for staff? Hearing done, we'll close the public portion, go to board decision.
Can I have a little clarification, what staff's intent was about company vehicles? Does that constitute a company vehicle?
Linda misinterpreted that, that alternatively means that it can use, be used alternatively as a, so you can use that van as a regular vehicle as well, so it's not exclusive to the business?
Right.
You know, it's licensed for the road.
Well, and kind of in reverse, we're kind of hoping they do use it for personal use, so then she could keep it.
Outside.
Well, right, right.
She could keep it outside.
And we, again, the question was brought up, you know, what about the person that works for the plumbing contractor?
Yes, on-call 24/7.
Drives their truck home.
Right.
We have an allowance for that, and, you know, in terms of an enforcement, so when we get those complaints, our answer to the...
That's allowable.
Members of the public is, you know, we, we allow for that, so.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Well, I'm just, I'm curious, if you own a business and you have a truck like this, this chimney sweep truck, you're not allowed to park it in your driveway after hours?
No, you are, that's what I wanted to clarify.
Okay.
Is the question came up, what about somebody that...
Well, you're allowed to park it there after hours, because there's an assumption
you use it for personal use as well.
Yes.
If, if he brought home a 40-foot crane used to lift panels at a concrete plant every night, no, he doesn't use that for personal use.
Yeah, if this was a...
That'd be different.
Like a boom truck?
Yes.
Or something that's really not for...
No.
Something that you use for personal use as well?
Now, she may not be running to Dolls to get groceries with the ladder van, but maybe she could, so.
And, and the reality of it is, is many of these, many businesses of that nature, it serves as both.
Right, gotcha, gotcha.
I guess if the board was looking to try to limit the situation, they might require that the, the business-associated vehicle be parked up by the house or some, you know, I...
Okay.
I'm trying to, anyway, a solution that will help the situation.
I just appreciate the clarification, I know it's a little confusing.
And then one, just one other real quick question. I know she's got a single car garage, but she's still allowed the concrete that she's allowed, because that makes it kind of a double width, or...
Yeah, she's allowed the double width, as long as it doesn't exceed 25 percent. That looks like it's been there a while.
Well, it could be grandfathered in, if it's not exactly...
Yeah, I don't think that was anything we looked at, whether it was in violation or not.
Right, okay.
As long as it's not exceeding 25 percent of the front yard area, is what we would have to look at.
Okay.
It's...
All right, we're still in the board decision.
It looks like a double wide to me, in terms of the driveway, but the garage clearly is not...
Let's close the public hearing.
Yes. I, I'd just like to see it limited to one company vehicle, labeled company vehicle can be allowed on the premises only, and only one employee can be allowed to report to work there, aside from the home occupation person.
We already have that authority.
Okay.
In other words, they can bring this back if there's another complaint by the neighbors.
Yes, yes.
Okay?
Yes, so, but I'm just saying, the rules, the parameters for approving this home occupation.
Well, what I'm saying is, I move staff recommendation.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, moved and seconded, is there any further discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries six to nothing.
I move the approval of the minutes for September 26, 2012 zoning board of adjustment meeting.
I'll second.
All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye. Motion carries six to nothing, have you had a chance to look?
I move approval of the 2013 schedule of the zoning board of adjustment, meeting dates.
Okay? You second, Linda?
I'll second.
All right, all those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries six to nothing, meeting's adjourned. Thank you all very much, good job.